Welcome to the April 26th edition of the Medfield Board of Selectmen meeting. This meeting will be held in a hybrid format. The Board of Selectmen will attend in person and members of the public may attend in person. In addition, members of the public who wish to participate via Zoom may do so by joining by the options that are listed in the agenda that you'll find on the town website for this meeting. Just a basic disclosure that this meeting will be video recorded and it will be broadcast by Medfield TV. At this point, we want to take a moment to acknowledge our troops serving around the Thank you. Okay, the first item we have on the agenda is a public hearing on the Farthest Star LLC doing business as Farthest Star Sake application for a new retail alcoholic beverages license. This is a farmer's series pouring permit at 120 North Meadows Road, Suite 2 in Medfield. This is an amusement license application.
That's separate.
That's separate. So there's both a retail alcoholic beverage license and an amusement license application. Can we handle them both simultaneously?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Then I take it you are here to speak?
Absolutely.
If you would move up to the podium and be delighted to... I was delighted to hear that we make sake here in Medfield, so this is great.
Little samples, like chop?
I was thinking about that.
Like shark tank, they always say get a little sample if you want to declare the hearing.
That's up to you, probably.
Thank you much. I was so excited about potential sake samples that I forgot. I hereby declare this public hearing open.
Great, hi, thanks for everybody having me here. My name's Todd Bellamy. I'm the owner and head brewer at Farthest Star Sake, which is New England's only sake brewery and taproom. We took over 6,000 square feet in the building at 120 North Meadows Road. And the front 1,330 square feet of that is taproom, open to the general public. And the rest of it is production brewery, where most of our revenue will come from. But it would be nice to have a taproom to have guests and local customers come and see the brewing process. Sake is a very misunderstood beverage, so it would be nice to have people come and enjoy sake and snacks and have events and that sort of thing.
So just because this is your first foray into this and it's a farmer's series license, just so you understand the context, farmer's series is a specialized class of licenses for beer, wine, distilled beverages, and sake, somewhere in there, based on local ingredients being used. So the actual process is it's a state license from the ABCC to have the operation, subject to local zoning, and then so in conjunction with that, they could have tasting and sale of product to take off the premises. What they're actually asking for tonight that is within your purview to license is the ability to sell for sit-down consumption.
Right.
So this is similar to what Zealous Brewing does?
Exactly, same thing.
Absolutely, and Seventh Wave as well.
Okay, and Seventh Wave. Seventh Wave has a food permit. Seven... Zealous does not, really, I don't think.
Right.
You are... Which are you planning to?
I do not have a kitchen, but we will have packaged snacks. And I was told by the folks downstairs that I would have to have a food permit, and I've already initially submitted the stuff for the food permit, and she's going to come out in a couple of weeks and do a walkthrough. But I'm only going to have packaged snacks or events that would involve food. In such an event, if they did like a chef pop-up in the brewery, they would be the onus to get the licenses on them. So they would get a one-day Medfield food permit. Yep.
And this facility that you're looking at, you said you could also hold events there?
Absolutely, small events. It's not huge, but yeah, we could have small events and, you know, be open for regular hours, which would include tours of the brewery and that sort of thing.
So I know some of the establishments over the years in Medfield have allowed people to bring in food. So you have like you have Seventh Wave right down the road.
Right.
You've got pizza, you've got places that would deliver. Would you allow that if people wanted?
I would. If there wasn't a food event already going on, I would allow people to bring in their own food. It's covered under my existing licensing, I believe. And so a farmer's brewery permit usually allows for that. And then the basic food permit for the town of Medfield also allows for that. So yeah, we could get pizza next door from Seventh Wave, which would be kind of a cool synergistic thing. And then people could bring in their own food. A lot of people want to do that anyways if they have small children. You know, I know when my kid was small, you know, it'd be nice to have your own snacks and not have to deal with outside food.
And when you say prepackaged, what would you define?
We actually have a vending machine filled with Japanese snacks. So things like chips and different kinds of packaged snacks like that that have a long shelf life, but they, in this case, they all happen to be from Japan.
And maybe it's in here and I missed it. When's the projected date of opening?
Memorial Day weekend?
Oh, fun.
It might not be in there. It's kind of a recent development, but I've just been waiting for the first couple of batches of sake to be finished and trying to get a better handle on that.
Fun.
I had three questions. First one is, are you on the first or the second floor?
There is only one floor at 120 North Meadows Road. There's a mezzanine section in the middle, but the whole building is like a warehouse style building, 21-foot ceiling, so there's just kind of a single-floor dwell building. Yep.
Is that the building where Seventh Wave is?
Absolutely, so Seventh Wave is...
So there is a second floor on part of the building.
Seventh Wave is all the way to the right of the side of the building I'm in, and then there's some empty warehouse space, and then there's me, and then there's a business called Astraluna. And then after that, there's a whole second half of the building, which I've never been in, but it has a mezzanine. That has a mezzanine section, and there's a dance studio, yoga studio, baseball place, a lawyer's office, the hometown weekly, you know, that sort of thing.
So the second question I had was that I saw that, I think that you had been a brewer at Boston Beer Company?
Yeah, I didn't brew at Boston Beer, but I worked for Brewing Quality, I worked for PR, I worked for a bunch of different departments over the eight years that I was there. But yeah, I worked at the Boston Beer Company.
So I know that there's a man who is a, used to be a brewer, or was a brewer, is a brewer at Boston Beer Company who lives here in Medfield. Did you know him?
I do, yeah, he's my old boss. He lives down the street, his name's David Grinnell.
Right on Main Street, right?
Yeah, he's like 100 feet down the street. And so he lives at like 4 something Main Street. So yeah, he's right there. He's stopped by a couple of times already to check the place out, make sure I'm doing okay.
Okay. And my last question was, before I came in here, a little white truck with the driver on the right side passed me in the parking lot. Was that you?
That is absolutely me, yeah.
Tell me what that vehicle is.
It's a 1995 Subaru Samba. It's a right-hand drive, four-wheel-drive truck from Japan.
Interesting vehicle.
So in Japan, every small business is built on the back of one of these trucks. It is the most widely-produced vehicle in Japan, and so I thought it'd be fun to kind of build my business on the back of one.
Oh, that's a very cool vehicle.
I also live on 27 in Natick, and so the brewery's on 27 in Medfield, so it's not a hard commute.
And it's a 95, did you say?
It's a 95. In the state of Massachusetts, such a vehicle has to be 25 years old to register it for driving, because it's EPA and DOT exempt. Yeah.
It's been a very informative hearing.
Yeah, it has nothing to do with being a right-hand drive, it's all just...
It's all the, yeah, there's no catalytic converter, although it gets 35 miles a gallon, I think it's probably okay. And then it's, there's no airbags, so current state laws.
It sounds very different, too, but it looks very cool.
Thanks. Yeah, it's the most useful vehicle I've... This is all being recorded, but it's the most useful... It's the most useful vehicle I've ever owned. It's the whole back folds down into a flatbed, you can pick up equipment with it and whatever. It's pretty convenient. Yeah, so you will see me driving around Medfield often to go to the bagel place or wherever. Yeah.
Great. That's it for me, thank you.
So my question, will that have any bearing on whether we approve your license?
I don't think so.
I'm curious, and especially now that I know where you got the vehicle from, how did you learn or choose to target?
Yeah, before I worked in the beer industry, I lived in Japan for a while, and I fell in love with sake there. And then when I came home, working in the beer industry, I just naturally at home, I started doing more and more sake stuff. It was difficult to find sake, and so, at the time. And so I got some brewing books from Japan and started making sake at home, and one thing led to another.
So I was hoping that was going to be your answer.
Oh, okay.
I've had one business trip to Japan. I've had sake here, which is like kind of a little green and a little rough.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Maybe that and my expensiveness.
It's hard to find good sake.
In Japan, it's a whole different thing. So if that's kind of where either you learned or where you're getting your information from, I'm optimistic that this is really going to be...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All my information comes from Japanese like primary sources, and then I've been back several times to work in breweries.
It almost doesn't taste like the same stuff you buy around here.
Yeah, like anything else, there's a...
It tastes like the same stuff I've been buying.
Like anything else, there's a variety. It would be like drinking Bud Light one time and saying you hate beer, right? You know, there's a pretty wide spectrum.
Yeah, that's why you endorse it.
Yeah, yeah, totally. Sorry, town of Medfield, no Budweiser endorsement.
Okay, then I guess we entertain a motion, and the motion will be for both the beverage license and the amusement license.
Yes, did you request hours?
I've... Are you talking to me?
Yeah, did you request hours?
Hours, did you request specific hours of operation?
I covered hours of operation when we initially put in our zoning permit, and then we resubmitted them again, I believe with this permit. So basically Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday would be when we're...
12 to 9, 12 to 9, 12 to 9, yes.
And that's what the ZBA gave you for hours?
Yeah, that was the range they gave me. Yep. Sunday's a bit of a gray area. I figured we would ask for nine, and, you know, it might not go that late, depending on local business trends.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
One question there.
Of course.
Are you... Who's going to be serving retail?
So initially, I will be running the taproom. I want to get a kind of feel for it anyway, since I have to train employees to do it. So I'll be running the taproom initially. Probably my wife will be having backup in the taproom. And then we'll hire some employees after we kind of get things rolling.
And are you tip or the equivalent certified?
I'm tip certified. We will get all of our employees tip certified. They actually added a pretty recent online version, so we can get all of our employees tip certified online, and then I will add my own layer of training that kind of goes above that.
We're good on the legal?
Yep.
Okay. And this is a public hearing, is there anybody? I don't see any questions coming in or any hands raised that anybody wants to talk with. Do we have any comments from the public or questions? Check it out. All right, then I guess we're ready for a motion.
Hearing, all right. I move that we award a farmer's series pouring permit and amusement license to Farthest Star LLC, DBA Farthest Star Sake for a new retail alcoholic beverage license at 120 North Meadows Road, Suite 2, Medfield. Hours Thursday through Sunday, 12 to 9.
Yes, sir.
One question and a friendly amendment. Are you supposed to be the... Are you going to be the manager of record?
Absolutely.
All right, so, and approve him as manager? And the amusement licenses for what?
I was told I needed an amusement license for recorded music.
Yeah, okay. A jukebox or something?
Yeah, speaker system with Bluetooth, yeah.
I will amend my motion in accordance with the council, town council's suggestion.
Can I second that?
Okay, please do.
All right, I will, second.
All those in favor? I oppose.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate it. Thanks for your time.
Good luck. Look forward to seeing your track.
I think I know our second seat visit.
See, I thought for sure you were going to want a sample, just to say like, oh, it is just like I tasted.
Well, that crossed my mind. I wonder whether we're doing care of the agenda for the meeting.
Give me a month. Give me a month, and then we'll be open.
After Memorial Day, you said.
Memorial Day weekend on the spot, we're going to open.
Does the parade go by there?
Huh?
I'm kidding.
No, the parade used to go by there. So basically, anybody applies for a license, they get one free advertisement at the Board of Selectmen, and we cover all the...
There you go, perfect. All right, appreciate it, Tom.
Thank you.
We'll see you all in the taproom.
All right, the second... Oh, and I hereby close the public hearing, I guess I didn't technically do that. The second is a continuing public hearing for the following solicitor license applications for Power Home Remodeling, Justin Palumbo, Samuel Kajuski, Matthew Heaney, Isaac Elkhury, and Andrew Gingras, if we have them.
Justin is here.
Justin is here.
He's joining the meeting now.
Okay.
On behalf of all of them?
Yes.
And did they resubmit apps, or they, we're going off last week?
Last week, yeah. We continued the hearing.
Okay.
So it looks like Justin, I see him live on the screen. Welcome, Justin, assuming you're off view.
Yes, sir.
There we go, okay. So we continued the... So we opened the public hearing last week, continued it because there was nobody out to talk to the applications.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that, I was sick last week. It slipped my mind.
Well, it's still open, and it looks like you're the one who's here to talk, so if you could, just give us a rundown of what you're doing, what you're asking for.
Yeah, so I'm Justin, I work with Power Home Remodeling. So basically, we're just leaving free estimates on the windows, siding, roof, gutters, trim. So we go door to door and just go from the areas that we have done work in previous cases.
Okay. Have any questions, Eileen? We saw, we have your applications, there were the periods of, the requested periods of authorization were all different, or most of them were different. We're, I believe, we're entertaining the shorter of the two, which were for two months?
Yeah, until the end of June.
Until the end of June, okay.
So that's the timeframe that's being asked for? Okay. And then, Justin, are you leading your team for all the other gentlemen that have put in applications? Are they reporting into you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
The police background checks, okay?
Yes.
Hours?
Well, yeah. Pete, you have any questions?
I wondered what the hours that you were going to be soliciting were?
12 to 6, sir.
And which, how many days a week?
Monday, Monday through Friday and every other Saturday.
Any other questions, Pete?
No, that's it.
Well, the only important thing I think, that I can think of on this one is that before you go out to an area, you should let the police department know you're going to be there. What often happens with the door-to-door type solicitations is people see in a neighborhood a stranger walking through, and they call it into the police. And so if the police know you're there, it'll just make your... It'll probably make the neighbors more receptive to having you there if they get a good answer for who you are and why you're there.
Yeah, we'll do that for sure.
I don't think I have any other questions besides that. You'll start, you're going out through the end of June, is it starting in May, or when do you actually start? This weekend?
So, no, so we're in Franklin right now, and then whenever we finish with Franklin, it could be like a few weeks or so.
Okay, so somewhere early to mid-May is probably...
Yeah, probably around there. Probably around the May, I would say, beginning of next year.
Okay. Do we have a, we have a question from the floor?
This one?
Can we just put the microphone near Bill? That's the good place to start it.
That's just curiosity. Some of the names of the solicitors seem familiar to me from Medfield families. Is anyone from Medfield, or is that just coincidental?
I don't think anybody on my team is from Medfield. I know Gingras is from North Attleboro, so it kind of flows.
Okay, I just didn't know there were... Yeah, okay.
Where is your company actually headquartered at?
Ray and Walhams, sir.
Walhams, okay. Any other questions? Any from the online public? I guess we can entertain the motion.
I would move to award a solicitor's license to Power.
Close, hold one, Pete.
Do you want to close this one?
Should I close the hearing before the motion?
Yes.
Okay, so I will close the public hearing, thank you.
Now I'll...
Now we'll...
Now I'll move to offer, to award a solicitor's license to Power Home Remodeling, including Justin Palumbo, Samuel Kajuski, Matthew Heaney, Isaac Elkhury, Andrew Gingras, running to the end of June for solicitation 12 to 6 p.m., Monday through Friday and every other Saturday.
All right, I second that motion?
All those, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you guys so much for coming in.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks for coming in. Okay. Let's see, next item on the agenda is the continued discussion of the warrant articles. We, at last week's meeting, we dealt with all but four of them, Articles 14, 18, 19, and 20. So I guess the first thing we do is start with Article 14, which is the, which is the Building and School Building Committee bylaw revision. I guess we'll let you start. I don't know if you have any further comments?
No, I mean, I think you opened my eyes to something I missed last week, which was with the Board of Selectmen being asked to assign four, but then four, of the four, two are being delegated as to where we should go with it. I just question, should we be delegating two and someone else be taking responsibility for the other two? Or are there really four that we should be delegating outside of the guidance from... So I appreciate you opened my eyes to that, because I missed that. Because as you said to me last week, it's not just about what's happening here. It was three people, maybe five people will be sitting here, five, six, 10 years down the road, and they may ask, like, why are we being designated to automatically assign? So I appreciate you bringing that forward.
Pete, comment?
I was fine with it last week, and I'm still fine with it now.
And in my case, I have a bigger issue than I had last week. So let me cover the bigger issue. The thing I had not appreciated last week when I read the revision is that the committee has deliberately decided to establish a school building committee completely out from under the jurisdiction of the Permanent Planning and Building Committee.
Oh, yeah, Megan brought that up.
I totally missed that when I went, when I reviewed things. So there's a number of specific details in the bylaw revision that I had issues with, but then I realized this week, and what I, I'll come back in a second. What I realized this week is there was a far bigger issue that has me concerned, which is that we're moving, creating this autonomous school building committee reportable to no one, partially defined by the Permanent Planning and Building Committee bylaw, partially not. What I'd anticipated is that there would be special provisions added to the planning and building committee for the circumstance when we were dealing with a school project. Makes no sense to me for, to establish a permanent planning and building committee, which I think we did in 2018, in order to bring a level of coherence and thoughtfulness and bringing people with the right kind of background to the table to guide us through developing buildings, and then carve out those buildings that are the most expensive, arguably the most critical in town, and pull them completely out from their jurisdiction. It just doesn't make sense to me to do that. So that's my fundamental issue that I now have, that was over and above the details. Having said that, I was probably a little chippy in my comments last week because I literally read this just before this meeting, and I was kind of reading it quickly to rush out the door. And so my comments were probably a little gruffier than I now feel about things. The main thing, last week I was sitting there saying, you're going to make changes like this, you have to vet them. You don't just make these wholesale things and throw them into a warrant report. I've talked to the moderator, town moderator, and I understand there was a, there was a whole sequence of communications from the Board of Selectmen, I think from the town administrator, from the town moderator, and the basic timeframe that this committee had to work in with a specified deadline that says, whatever you got, you got to get it in time for us to get it into a town meeting warrant, that has caused me to back off on... It is something that should have been vetted, but I don't fault the committee for not doing it. I would also say that I watched the hour and 41-minute recording of the committee's April 4th meeting, and I was very impressed with the sincerity and the diligence that they brought to the table in trying to figure out how to reword this. So a, nothing that I'm saying in terms of the concerns I have about the revision should reflect poorly on the members of the committee.
Hundred percent.
However, there are flaws in the revision as drafted that I think need to be corrected. I have sat down with the chair of the warrant committee, because there's also concerns on the warrant committee that the revision as it's been drafted is not really the revision that we need. And what we discussed doing was putting together an amendment predefined before the meeting, not to, so not just torpedo this thing, but basically suggest the revisions to this bylaw that would make it a more effective bylaw going forward. So in my case, I am against the article as it is in the warrant report. I am not against the direction that the article is trying to take, and I'm optimistic that we'll be able to at least offer an amendment for consideration by the taxpayers that I think will address the issues that I have, and the warrant committee has a different set of issues, but I'm optimistic that we'll be able to put a little more, a little more feasible and probably a more effective amendment for this on the table. One of the glaring things is that the members, as it's written right now, the members of this building committee have three-year terms. Well, we probably are only going to build schools every 10, 15, or 20 years. So I used with, with the discussion with the chair of the warrant committee, this is kind of like the members of the school building committee, it'll be kind of like the cicadas, you know, the 12-year cicadas that'll emerge from the ground once every decade or a decade and a half, and that doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So anyway, that's kind of the direction of my thinking, that's the reason for it. My comments here are not intended to trash what the committee did or to suggest the entire revision is outrageous and unacceptable. It's that I think that with an amendment, we may have a more suitable bylaw.
And there's a meeting tomorrow night, will it be discussed tomorrow night?
So they will be discussing it tomorrow night, which I think will clarify what the... There appears to be a split on the warrant committee. This will clarify how that split occurs.
Okay.
I've been asked to attend.
You have? Okay, that's great. So they, I'm pretty sure they won't flip. I think we definitely have an effort to create an amendment. How the warrant committee comes out on that, I don't know.
Okay.
So I think, so basically, this is a discussion again, this is not a formal vote. My vote right now is to recommend dismissal of the article, but you both should understand the understanding, I anticipate there will be a pre-documented amendment that will address concerns, so they will be moving to amend it.
Good.
It's not a deep, deep philosophical disdain for the idea of having this revision.
Do you have some idea of what the amendment's going to be?
Well, I think, I think from my, the short answer, I guess, Pete, is no, because I don't know fully what the warrant committee's concerns are. I saw some of them, and off the top of my head, they kind of mapped a little bit onto some of the concerns that I had, but they had a few others beyond that. I think initially what I saw, they were, just as an example, is something that they initially had a concern about that I don't think needs to be that great a concern. In a way, the revision largely moved the Board of Selectmen out of the process. There's a provision that they can be there, but they really have been pulled out of the process. They had an initial concern that the selectmen, who would be a representative on that committee, wouldn't be on the committee, therefore the selectmen would have no vote. I don't have as big a deal about a representative from the Board of Selectmen being on that committee in a non-voting capacity, because I've always struggled with when I'm the rep on a committee, making recommendations that come back to the Board of Selectmen.
Right.
It's, I don't think there's a rule against it, but it's a little awkward to both vote on the recommendation and then you vote on approving the recommendation.
Yeah, how do you, yeah, you fight against yourself? You vote yes and want to know the other, yeah.
On the other hand, when I think about last year, had we not had a representative on the committee, I think it would have been a much harder job for the building committee to present its case for approvals along the way, because we wouldn't have really been read into the process. read into the process. There was a certain amount of, there would be certain issues that if you weren't in the process, you'd have questions about, but if a fellow member of the board was there and said, yeah, we talked about that, and this is what it's, that kind of
That makes sense.
allays your concerns in a way that having the committee members just come and say it's not going to do it. So that was, that was one, but I, personally, I wasn't hung up on the vote issue.
Yeah.
Because of that awkwardness of having the Board of Selectmen approve a recommendation that a selectman voted on already.
Yep.
So that piece wasn't a problem. So I basically am technically against the article as written.
Okay. I support, I, I, I second that.
You're in the same spot.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, so you feel the same way.
Yes, feel the same way.
Pete? I'm fine with it the way it is.
So two to one, we're recommending dismissal of the article, with the understanding of the amendment coming in.
Exactly, yep.
And with no derogatory comments on the job that the committee itself did in drafting the revision. Okay, that's fourteen.
Good question.
Sure.
Chris Potts, I don't know if there's anyone tuning in tonight that is actually on the Bylaw Review Committee that might want to provide any additional perspectives.
There's a couple. Mrs. on, Carol's on.
If they'd like to speak, I mean, this was, the main purpose of tonight's discussion was just to have a, have a recommendation coming from the Board of Selectmen, so.
That committee is actually posted to meet with the Warrant Committee tomorrow night, so they may feel more comfortable talking as a.
Okay.
But I guess the question is, in terms of just sequencing, it would seem to me that voting on a dismissal would be more helpful, maybe after the Warrant Committee, I mean, you can't, the time, you can't change the timing, but you would get more information at that point. I also, I mean, I do have, definitely have concerns about having a draft that no one's going to be able to see until the floor of town meeting to be able to look at it and review it.
Yeah, I did too. I did too. That's why I asked, I talked to the town moderator and specifically asked that question. Would it be better for us just to have a straight-up or straight-down vote on the article? Or are you prepared to handle an amendment live in the open meeting? I, I agree with you, Chris. I think, the only thing I, I don't think this is like a massive rewrite. There's some, there'll be some very clear changes and some clear rationales. And the only thing that Scott had said is, look, if you're going to do that, I don't want to process individual amendments on specific items. I'd rather have a single written amendment that people can look at. So I think that's fine.
Yeah, but I think when you consider that this committee met five times, each time for one and a half to two hours, and put a lot of thoughtful discussion points into even the smallest points that they've talked about at great detail, it's kind of, you know, it's dis, a little bit disingenuous to then all of a sudden take it out of their hands and put it on the floor of town meeting and not have the same ability to sort of dig into the rationale as to why, or to understand the rationale as to why it was worded a particular way. I'll also give you one, the other correction too, is that the terms, the term limit, I don't know whether you're talking about the school building committee members or the permanent building and planning and building committee members.
No.
The, the three-year term is only for the permanent, it's not for the school building committee, the three-year.
I'll have to read it again.
Yeah, it's.
I thought, I thought my reading of that was, it was the school building. So if that's true, then I take back that comment.
Yeah, it's for the life of the project.
Chris, if this was done the way it should have been done, with the kind of changes that were made, under normal circumstances, this should have been very carefully vetted with all the affected bodies. So it's not their fault that it was a shorter period of time, it's not our fault that it's that short a period of time. The only thing to do at this point is we have an article, my, my hope actually, is that the amendment that we have, it might be that the committee itself would say, okay, we understand why you're doing what you're doing, and we understand, you know, maybe it's not the way we thought about it, but we recognize how you've changed it, and we, now that you've told us why. I haven't, I haven't completely ruled out the possibility that the committee itself would say, we like the amendment better than what we came up with, so.
I'm just curious, so how do you know that there was a split vote? Because they didn't actually vote at the last meeting.
No, I don't know if, you mean the Warrant Committee?
Yeah.
When I talked to the, when I talked to the Chair of the Warrant Committee, she said there might be a minority report, so I assumed it was a split vote.
Okay, because they didn't really vote, they didn't really weigh in, they're waiting to hear from the committee.
So they probably, yeah, I mean, I know they didn't vote, but they probably have a sense that we have, like, same thing we did, we, we talked about this last week, and I had a sense of where we would come out. So if you're saying, did they do a formal vote? No, I guess they're going to do the formal.
I mean, I was there.
But if you're, if you're the Chair of a committee, you want to know where you're going.
Yeah, but I mean, I was there, I didn't even get a, I mean, I got a pretty good sense of, I didn't get a sense of how they were leaning one way or the other.
Did you ever against it?
No, I didn't have a.
I just had a conversation last night, and someone was against it.
No, 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 I didn't have a sense, I didn't have a clear sense one way or the other. I didn't, yeah, I think there, I got the clear sense they wanted to wait to hear from the committee tomorrow. That was what I got.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, certainly if the committee has a compelling case to make to them tomorrow, and I find out on Thursday morning that everybody's changed their mind, they're all on board, that could entirely, you know, they haven't taken the vote.
Right.
So absolutely, that could happen.
Can you, Gus, for the benefit of the, all of us, can you go into some specifics about the objections that you have about the word, about aspects of the amendment?
You know, I didn't really come prepared to go into, I, I mean, I have some detail, I'm actually doing a Word document with various comments. My major concern now, which was in last week, was completely ripping the school building committee out from the, from the Permanent Planning and Building Committee's jurisdiction. I, I, there was nothing in last year's article that said that would be something to do, so I didn't even see that one coming. And the reason I care about that is that presumably we have some of our best people in the building, you know, in the area of town buildings, they're on the Permanent Planning and Building Committee. So the idea that we would basically almost exclude them doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I, I had some issues that I expressed last week about the, the degree to which the, in the case of the selectman, the, who we would designate sort of was specified, and I objected to the ability, to the idea that our own discretion about figuring out the most important issues affecting, because remember, this is a bylaw, this is not just a bylaw for this next project.
Right.
This is a bylaw for these, for projects going out until somebody forms a committee to revise the bylaws again. I can see circumstances down the road where some of the specific issues we've told, we were told in that draft that we had to consider, those might not be the issues. Traffic could be the issues, water could be the, I mean, we had all, there's a lot of different things, and the idea that some, you know, that basically the selectmen either aren't viewed as being able to exercise that kind of judgment, or shouldn't be given that leeway, yeah, I objected to that. I think I also mentioned, it talked, the, the Planning Board, it talked about the interests of the Planning Board. I object to the word interests. The reason is committees, town committees and town boards have responsibilities. Interest confuses me, because interests, if, if it's anything other than responsibilities, people on those boards should keep their interests out of the consideration. So I have a problem with that specific word. And then tied to that was the reference to the Townwide Master Plan, and it's, and the interests of the Townwide Master Plan without limitation. Those words, A, the Townwide Master Plan is a document owned by the Planning Board, they're the ones who approve it, they're the ones who internalize it, and they accept it. It's an inanimate document, inanimate documents don't have interests. And then I didn't even know what without limitation then. So that, that, that raised an alarm bell for me, that somebody who had an agenda was influencing the words of a bylaw in a way that was not appropriate. So that's almost wordsmithing, because it's not like, the planning board owns that plan, so the planning board is going to use that plan as they see fit. So there were, there were some things like that that I, and I think, like, I'm going through in more detail now, those are the things just right off.
That's helpful.
Yeah.
That's very helpful, thank you.
Yeah, I, I think maybe a little bit of it is to make sure that we don't over-distort the bylaw based on last fall's experience and poison the well for the next ten or twenty years of school building projects that we might have. That doesn't mean we're not responsive to what we learned from last fall, and we don't think about how, how a bylaw revision particularly, like, the thing I'm sympathetic to is the, you know, more built-in public participation around literally the representation of the, of the committee. So one of the things that the Warrant Committee raised was the provision of a member being sixty-five. I, I think it was a legitimate legal issue. Can you specify a minimum age for someone? You probably actually have to talk about who it is that would nominate someone, I think the intention is to try to represent the interest of the more senior people in town. It might make more sense to have it be the COA figures out who needs to represent those people and not have some sort of specific demographic requirement. So that was, that was the one that I hadn't thought of, but I agree with. So let me go there, I'll go there, and then she starts first, then we'll come back to you. Go ahead.
Mike.
Microphone over there.
Hi, just in terms of, it's Jess Riley, and this is my personal view at this point, but one of my concerns is that when I look at the section, if, if the school building committee section kind of remains in there, however we kind of rejigger this, there's just some kind of budgetary issues, you know, that somehow the, the school department is supposed to pay for certain parts, which I would hate to see put into a bylaw, because quite frankly, that belongs to the school building committee in the feasibility study. And if we were to put that into bylaw without correction, that would just be something else that we would have to go back and recorrect. So I think that there's some kind of attribution issues there in terms of what a school committee is, what a school budget is, and what a school building committee is, and what a feasibility study should do. So I just want to make sure that we're all aware that there's, beyond just the basic wordsmithing, the consequences of some of that wordsmithing. I also have to say that I would be concerned about putting an age limit on who gets, who is asked to be part of a, a building committee or anything else. I think that, that, again, I would go to your point of the COA being able to have a representative there, but otherwise, it just smacks of ageism to me, quite frankly. So, thank you very much. Again, that's my personal opinion at this point.
I, I think your comment, Jess, that was, there is a provision in the draft that basically talks about who takes, who has to take minutes, and that's like, that's not bylaw level stuff.
Yeah, it's more in the weeds than the actual policy development.
So this, is that, you know, some of that stuff is almost tactical wordsmithing. Mark?
Yeah, I think I want to reemphasize the context here, at the risk of being repetitive, because it's critical that everyone have that understanding going in, to understand what happened before and to avoid it going forward. So you can have a local bylaw, that being said, if you're going to go the MSBA process, they have a specific, they have regulations. Included in those regulations is a requirement for setting up a local school building committee for a particular project, and they have criteria for who's supposed to be on it. They leave it to you, first of all, if you have a bylaw that complies more or less, they'll consider whether that satisfies the requirements. What happened here was, in our case, going back to last year, or earlier even, when this project first got going, our people on permanent building, Mike McQuinlan in particular, recognized that our committee as, as constituted was too narrow, it would not meet their requirements. And so then it was, then it was up in the air, we were under the gun, and ultimately the committee was set up on an ad hoc basis, the building committee. So MSBA has specific criteria, which this review committee had accessible to it and tried to address. They will leave the specifics as far as, and they're very specific as to recommended composition. They leave how people get on, whether they're voted or not voted, all that stuff, they don't address that. They, they leave that to you to work out, but, but they do have a lot to say with what the makeup and composition is. And so I know that the committee had available to it that regulation and reviewed it, as did former BOS Chair Markucci when he drafted a, what I thought was simple but workable amendment early on, but you need to be aware of that as you're trying to wordsmith.
Yeah, the stuff that I think I reacted to, wouldn't be that kind of stuff. I, I had sort of, I assumed the committee knew about that, but was drafting a bylaw which was not exclusive to MSBA school projects. So basically, you have a school project that says, well, if the MSBA participates, maybe they'll, you know, maybe they'll specify.
There is, there is, there is saving language that was inserted at my recommendation, because I think it's a prohibition on Board of Selectmen themselves serving, and in fact...
That's an MSBA requirement.
No, no, in, in this, I believe there was.
It was, yeah.
And the B, and in fact, the MSBA has select people listed as, so that's why there's language in there, that if there's any restriction, then that, then the MSBA would trump the specifics of the local regulation.
As I said last week, the thing that I got a chuckle out of on that one was the very, one of the early provisions is that no town employees could serve on the committee, and the three of us technically are town employees, so.
I was going to say the entire thing, just down.
Right.
All the school committee members, everything.
Yeah. So, well, we're paid employees, though, I think that gives us a special.
Superintendent and principals, and again, those are people that are called out by the MSBA, so.
Yeah, I, I, personally, I didn't have major heartburn with the people that couldn't vote. I was more focused on people who couldn't be on the committee that I never, in my experience with committees here in town, the distinction between the ability of a non-voting member to influence the conversation on the committee versus the actual formal votes of the voting members in the committee, if anything, sometimes gets fuzzed up more than perhaps is completely justified, but, but I like, I'd rather err on the side of more democracy than less, so it's okay with me.
So Gus, a couple of comments on your, on your presentation. I don't think there's anything that stops members of the permanent building, planning and building committee members from being appointed to the school building committee, so I don't, I think, and that's pretty much the same situation that we had at the last go-around, that they weren't the same committees, but they, a lot, there was a lot of overlap, so you could certainly appoint the people who have that expertise in building, architecture, whatever.
Yeah, I'm not sure that's right, though, Pete, but last school, the school building committee we had last time around, there's a provision in the bylaw that the Permanent Planning and Building Committee is allowed to delegate to subcommittees, other departments, or other authorities. And so I viewed the creation of this past school building committee as a committee that was effectively spawned by the Permanent Planning and Building Committee to be the, you know, they, they may have chosen to do that because there's MSBA requirements, or they may have chosen to do it just because school projects are so complex and significant that it just isn't the same as a normal run-of-the-mill, if there is such a thing.
But I think you get to the same, the same result in, in both situations, so I don't find that a problem. I, I don't find.
Well, then you wouldn't find, you wouldn't find it as a problem of keeping that under the jurisdiction of the permanent building committee either, right? What would the problem be?
I hadn't thought that through, so I, I don't know. That probably could work, but you certainly don't want to exclude your, your, your people that have the expertise, but there's no prohibition here that they, that they wouldn't get appointed, basically, so that I don't think it's a problem. I also, I don't have a problem with the language in here about the planning board interests and the Townwide Master Planning interests. I don't think that that's, I mean, that's just wordsmithing that we don't need to do, I think, so.
I think it's wordsmithing that you do need to do, but.
Yep, I hear you.
But, yeah, you know, the one, just the point, Pete.
Disagree.
Fair enough. The issue of the jurisdiction, that in the draft as it's been written, the actual school construction project is carried out in the, in this draft by an autonomous school building committee. However, all of the other responsibilities for the schools around the assessment of the current status of the schools, that still is left with the Permanent Planning and Building Committee. So there's not a clear, it's not like schools are completely the responsibility of this other entity, and my biggest issue with that other entity is it's an entity that appears, and then it goes away, and it goes away for ten years, then it appears where it seems to me, if it came out of the Permanent Planning and Building Committee, there's a continuity there that probably leads to a more effective establishment of that special committee. The other thing is, and maybe we don't get this as thoroughly as I would like us to get it from the Permanent Planning and Building Committee, but I'd like the planning side of this to be a little more coherent around the strategic direction of the town's major capital building projects. And what I'm reacting to is that during the last discussion, when the Dale Street School reuse came up, all of a sudden, there were incremental ideas about how Parks and Rec could use part of that building. Well, that was a pretty... Well, that was a pretty ad hoc set of ideas. Maybe they were good ideas, but I would have preferred to have known that the permanent planning and building committee had said, listen, we know we've got this big project here, and we think it's going to be this big for the school, therefore, this is when we think the town should be looking at dealing with the Parks and Rec facility. This is, it's, it's kind of like that strategic roadmap, which to me is the planning side of the permanent planning and building committee. I'd actually like to see that committee do more to help us navigate the strategic path that we're going to follow than I think, at least than I saw in the discussions that took place last fall.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would like the town to be doing more planning, but it, it becomes problematic because we have such a small town government, basically. It's difficult to spend huge amounts of time on, I mean, we've got a document that looks forward to 25 years of, of building maintenance, but it's very hard to really pinpoint those, those things that we're going to be needing to do in each year.
At any event, this amendment, I think, won't be like a major blow the whole thing up and redo it. I think it will, people will be able to see what the changes that are being proposed are, they'll be able to make their own decisions on which one they like better. And as I said, I'm not sure that if we do it, that we might not even find that the bylaw review committee would say, I understand what the issues are. And I can see how what you've done makes it a more longer range and effective. I, I would rule that out.
Right.
And I feel that way, not because I know it's going to be such a great amendment, but because I saw the sincerity that they, they brought to the table on their, on their April 4th meeting. It's like, okay, they're trying to figure it out. So I would think they'd be open-minded and get whatever we get.
And as you said, they've been given a crazy short window, right? And they're, they're very busy people themselves to dedicate all the time they have, you know.
So anyway, that's, that's that one. So that one, we're basically recommending two to one, recommend dismissal, but it's kind of like without a whole lot of teeth gnashing and finger. Next one is the Article 18. And Jess, you're here, so I will, I will, would you like to start, or do you want me to start about the conversation we had?
Well, I've been awarded the microphone, so. I know, thank you. No, Gus, actually, if you'd like to start, and then I can just kind of add on that we anticipated meeting.
I sat, I sat down with Jess and Superintendent this afternoon. The issue that I think was plaguing me around us voting one way or the other on Article 18 was the fact that we had not formally received a request from the school committee, voted on and approved, asking for the money. So I talked to Scott McDermott over the weekend, and I said, Scott, we kind of have you, for the best of reasons and good faith, put in a placeholder article. That placeholder article made it into the warrant report, but technically never had been formally approved and requested. So as we were a week away from the town meeting, I suddenly said, well, wait a minute. We're cosponsors, but we're not the lead sponsor, and we wouldn't sponsor it alone. We're cosponsoring, providing support to the school committee, the school committee asked for it. And technically, the school committee has not yet asked for it. So the case I made to Scott was, what we have is a ghost article here. There is no sponsor, there is no article. It happens to be that it's printed in the warrant report. Scott first thought that it would be a motion to dismiss. I pushed it harder and said, no, if there's not a sponsored article, it's a withdrawal. And we agreed that we would talk to you about that. But after the conversation that we had this afternoon, what it looks like will happen, and I think, Jess, if I, if I can speak out of, out of school here, well, it's not out of school, that you, the, the chair of the school committee does not know with 100% certainty that a majority of the school committee members are on board with voting to sponsor this.
Because we've never discussed it in open meeting, and we haven't necessarily, I think that there was a little bit of a, the two ships passing in the night, that everybody thought it was a great idea to save this money to start kind of going towards the feasibility study, but we, I think we just didn't, I think that we were thinking, okay, well, the SBC will ask for it, or at some point, or, you know, the town would ask for it, but we didn't realize that we needed to co-sponsor.
So, so, so what I heard, I think, this afternoon was, well, gee, will the townspeople even be willing to authorize the expenditure of any money for a school building project that does not yet have a school building committee? And the argument, I think, that, you know, I've certainly had is, well, the problem is if you don't put any funding down in May, there won't, you can, assuming some version of the bylaw revision passes, or nothing passes, either way, we're still going to have a school building committee that will be formed, that will then sit there twiddling their thumbs, waiting for the authorization of money, which probably at the earliest wouldn't come before the, some fall special town meeting. So the issue of time being of the essence, the understanding would be if this money is approved at town meeting, it's approved for a feasibility study. The feasibility study would only be carried out by a school building committee. So the, the answer for anybody in town that doesn't want to just approve funding is, the funding can't be used unless the school building committee exists, and making it available to cover the first six months of this effort puts us in a position that if we do, in fact, have to, you know, deal with the MSBA, if, so it's later on in the agenda, but if we submit an SOI, and the MSBA approves the project, and we have to decide whether we want to be, you know, accept that or not, in order to be in a position to actually know what it is we want to do to make an intelligent decision on that, we need the building committee to be able to start its work in the summer. So that's, this is a matter of, either you, either you give up a half year to a year just to let all the chips fall in the normal way, or you put this in place. The worst that happens is the taxpayers vote for an extra $250,000 on the tax levy than what they might otherwise have had to do. That drops the free cash if we don't spend it.
Drops back into the municipal stabilization.
It's municipal stabilization.
And it has to be spent, that's the other thing about the article, is it has to be spent by, or at least the way it reads right now, is that it would have to go, if that $250,000 wasn't fully spent, it would have to go back into the municipal stabilization fund in-
Sorry, yeah, wrong account.
Next May. So, and, and I assume at that point, you know, I, I don't think anybody has the impression that a feasibility study, a full feasibility study would cost $250,000.
This is, this is clearly to get us started up, up through the end of the year. Undoubtedly, some number, the higher than that is what would be required to complete the feasibility study.
Yeah, yeah.
So can I ask a question? Has, have we done anything like this before for?
We have never been in this situation, to my knowledge. Not, not-
We are in a terrible-
And so all I'm asking that for is, are we setting a precedent that a year or two from now, people will go, but at town meeting 2022, you did the following, so you can't say you've never done it? So, so for the right reasons, we'll do it? That we've appropriated money that's, that hasn't been formally requested, but we're trying to get ahead of the eight ball?
So, so let me jump to-
So we have part B of this conversation?
Okay, you gotta tell me B.
So tonight, my recommendation is that the Board of Selectmen defer voting one way or the other on whether or not to approve the article, which means we'll have to have a Board of Selectmen meeting just before the town meeting.
Okay.
It would appear that the school committee will be holding a meeting prior to the town meeting. Right now, I would say it appears more likely than not that, this is me talking, this is not, I'm not quoting Jess here, it appears more likely than not, the school committee would support requesting that money. So once the school committee has formally requested it, then in my view, it would be appropriate for the Board of Selectmen certainly to acknowledge our role as cosponsors.
Okay.
And before the town meeting starts, basically vote to recommend, presumably recommend approval, so that at the town meeting itself, it could be announced that the Board of Selectmen recommend approval. What I don't think should happen is the Board of Selectmen sponsor spending that the school committee doesn't want.
Totally agree, okay.
So I don't want to be, I'm willing to be cosponsor, but not a lead sponsor.
And, and conversely, or aligned within that on the other side of the quarter, we don't want to be a single sponsor of requests for $250,000 without having the full support of the, the select board as well.
And I think this is sending-
Because it's town and school, right? We want, we're working so hard on kind of really trying to incorporate our ownership of these projects.
But I know, I think that I'd be floored at town meeting if the citizens come out in numbers after how many people said we need a new school, and they thought, oh, this is, this is going to get shelved, and it's going to be 12 to 24 months before anyone acts on it. I think there's, in good faith, you're seeing a lot of people spend a lot of time in a very short window, so I'd like to think that, that we're sending the right message that we're not sitting back and letting time go by.
So I have kind of herded my folks to have a meeting, and we will announce that, but we're going to have a meeting on Friday to discuss Article 18 specifically, and we'll put the agenda out, but it's.
And I think the one point that we made this afternoon is to make sure that the taxpayers are not, that the expectation of the taxpayers, that they understand this is not the full funding that's probably going to be required for the feasibility study. This is the front end of that funding, so that we can start work as soon as the building committee is formed. But probably depending, when we get to the fork in the road at the end of the year, there'll still be work to do, whether it's MSBA process specified work, or whether it's just town-funded school project work, there's still going to be some work to do. So there will be added funding that will be requested for this feasibility study. No one should think that this is the, this is the substitute for the million dollars that we spent last time.
But I know you're going to get the question, I've already gotten this, I'm walking around town, that, knowing that this question's being kicked around, that we did spend, what, of the million, 800,000 of it for the feasibility? So I have to believe some of that data can be recycled?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think that's a reasonable expectation.
Still the same school, the same address, and, yeah.
And being on the school committee, but not the school building committee, I will leave that to the school building committee to figure out what that is. So, but I think that it's a, it's a good kind of first step to make sure that we do at least have that funding secured for them, particularly around a lot of the public outreach work that, you know, I think we've all requested, and is actually in the first line of the warrant article itself, is that first funding request is about gathering public input and understanding where the town is, so.
That's where we are on that one.
Would you like your mic back, Bill?
Yes.
Okay. The next one is Article 19.
Was it on the town meeting website?
I didn't, I didn't.
Okay.
I went to the Concom website because I wanted to see what the old open space plan looked like, and I found a 230-page plan with a seven-year action plan, and the date of that 230-page plan was April 2021, 12 months ago. So my question is, why is, the article states that our plan expires on November 22?
It does. It took so long to put that plan together with the volunteers that it's actually going to expire.
It says it's April 2021.
That's when it was provisionally-
Yeah, there was, we submitted additional materials to the state in April 21 to try to get to full approval from conditional approval, and they said, thanks, but still conditionally approved, and even more work to do.
Yeah.
But what would we do? I was actually pretty impressed with that plan. So my real question here is, we, we're talking about spending $25,000 on a plan that's currently dated 2021, but okay, there's some weird state thing that's saying, even though it says 2021, it's really 2017 or whatever it is we're talking, or 2015. I thought some of the stuff that's been added in there is definitely more current than 2015, without a doubt.
Yes, exactly.
I actually liked it because it incorporates so many sections. We actually have a plan that appears to take segments of other plans that we've done here in town, and integrates them all into a plan that makes sense. What would the state need from us above and beyond the 230 pages of reasonably coherent and actually attractive materials that would cause us to have to hire a consultant to do anything?
I have the listing in front of me.
Yeah.
If you want it.
I do, I do. This is ridiculous.
Additional information on the water resources, including more detailed information on wetlands and the town's watersheds, additional information on environmental challenges facing the town, additional information on the actual quality and condition of existing town-owned conservation and recreation properties, and a lot more information on ADA accessibility of town-owned conservation and recreational properties that are to have required, state required inventory forms completed. And the last piece was more of a document thing. We missed a map, but.
I mean, that doesn't, that still sounds like it's an incremental edit. I mean, the stuff is, I, I didn't read all 230 pages. I looked at, I did look at all 230 pages, and it seems to me there was comments on ADA compliance in there. There's, I'm not sure what else you'd need on the water resources, but I would think that the water board, whatever it is you need, the technical information that the water board would have, it's like, given, given the state of that report, it's not clear to me what a consultant being handed $25,000 would do, that's worth $25,000. I would rather have, not have a consultant ruin what we have there, because it just seems like, I mean, I don't mind working off the checklist, but it seems to me we should be able to get that done within the, within the document.
So I guess I would suggest, Gus, that there are two ways of getting it done. One is to hire a consultant, the other is to have town staff do it.
Correct.
And the question is whether or not we have town staff. We're, we're, we're going to, we have issues with the Conservation Commission's turnover that's, that's coming our way.
The Conservation Commission agent has resigned.
So here's my problem. We spend money on a plan that a consultant develops because we don't have anybody that in town that can actually put the time and effort, and more importantly, the mental power into it. So we have this document that gets some juror crap at the state level happy, but it's not, nobody knows-
I think, you know, I, I don't want to speak on behalf of the Conservation Commission, and I was remiss in not inviting him to come speak to you tonight, but I, I think that we do have the staff that can do some of that incorporation, incorporation of what you're speaking about, what the state wants, but we do need some technical expertise. And to me, through the last plan, we took almost six years to develop it. So the concern was we need to be more expedient this time.
And to add to that, I think one of the other things that was suggested is whether it's, it's not necessarily one consultant to do $25,000 worth of work, maybe it's three or four experts to help augment certain sections of the plan that need assistance, whether it's getting better GIS quality maps that can go right onto our GIS mapping, whether it's experts on ADA, just to identify and help us out, map a plan for ADA accessibility on a few places.
Who in town is the single person responsible for making sure this gets done?
There was an Open Space and Recreation Plan Committee overseeing this work until it was submitted to the state and requests for improvement came back.
And the Board of Selectmen usually appoints an Open Space and Recreation Committee to take this plan update on. Yeah, there are, there are Board of Selectmen Committee, but they're represented-
And a big volunteer was Rob Agler, who was on the Concom to do this.
I don't, I don't think that the people on the committee, Gus, were working with town staff for the most part. So I think they were doing it on their own, you know, a great volunteer effort, but I think we've gotten to the point where you can't ask your volunteers to finish it, to get it across.
So, so I'm good with that. The question I asked is, who here in town has the lead responsibility for, let's assume this $25,000 for consultants? Who here in town is responsible for pulling this together? Because to me, it's an incremental revision. I mean, I actually thought the plan was pretty good. So if there's specific deficiencies that the state has given us, that's fine. If we need to give, if we need to spend $25,000 on one or more consultants, that's fine. Who's responsible for getting this thing pulled together?
I would put it under, obviously, under my office, but then under Sarah, who's managing land use, and she would coordinate with Parks and Recreation.
So Sarah, so Sarah would be the one that's responsible? I would like to hear from my two colleagues, what you think about the $25,000 expenditure for this in order to get it there.
Well, in listening, I know I've spoken with you, and I've had, heard from, from Nick. I understand what you guys are trying to do into that. I applaud that this allows us to get grant money, if we do what we're supposed to do, right? And I love what Nick just said, instead of putting $25,000 in one person's pocket, is if we truly need three, four, or five people to, to spread it out to hit those certain areas, so we can, we can accomplish this, check off the ability to get the grant, I think, in the, the grand scheme of things. I'm not so uptight about the $25,000. I am uptight about making sure that, that it's, people are accountable for it. And that's, I think, that's something, and I look to you, Christine, as, having never- I think that's something, and I look to you, Christine, as having never been behind one of these, is there a kind of a milestone? We're not handing the consultant the money upfront. They've got to do what they've got to do, or there's no payment.
Right, so it's a full RFP of exactly what you want me to do, and I would expect, and I believe you are required, to appoint an open space and recreation committee to oversee the plan. I would, I don't think it should be just staff incorporating this because you have to have some community involvement, so I think you're going to have to have a volunteer committee to assist.
So I think I heard two answers on who's responsible for making sure this happens. First one was Sarah, the second one was a committee that we have to appoint. So who's responsible to make sure this happens?
Well, I think, Krista, that it's her office.
I think ultimately it's me. I don't want to see us not available for grant funding if we don't finish this plan.
Since we've done all the work this far, to not do it and finish it out?
Right.
Can I ask the question a different way? What, if anything, does the Board of Selectmen need to do? I understand ultimately the buck stops there, but that's not really what I was asking. I'm actually looking for who the driver is to get this job done. And I, first you said Sarah, so it's like, I still, without knowing the scope of the work, I'm still looking at, saying, okay, they gave us a checklist of things that need to get fixed, not that I'm saying Sarah has to do all the work by herself, and Sarah will hate that I'm even bringing her name up in such a casual and expansive way, but...
Oh, I'm sure she's texting me right now.
But my point is that somebody needs to drive this. If they, if it took us six years to get it done, okay, it's done, I actually like it. Six years well spent, even if it's too late. So I guess we have to buff it up so that it doesn't expire in November, which means we're eligible for grants up through November right now, but in order to go beyond that, we have to buff it up to address these deficiencies. I'm not saying that Sarah has to do that by herself, but then I think maybe what you're saying is that there's a, is that not really the answer? The real answer is the Board of Selectmen has to appoint a committee, and the committee is who's responsible for doing it. I'm just trying to, I don't want it to take six more years to get a buffed-up version, is all I'm getting at.
I think that's the point of spending the $25,000, Gus, is that it won't take six more years, we'll get it done, we'll become eligible for grants again.
I get that, I get that, but the point is, $25,000 going to consultants is like saying, well, we can buy five cows for our ranch. It's like, yeah, but who's the rancher that's making sure that the cows are on the fields that they need to be in?
What I can tell you, in the past, I think that the Conservation Commission has basically overseen the process of this plan. It was, there was, there apparently is a committee.
There's always been an open space, since I've been here, there's been an open space and recreation committee.
But that committee seems to report to the Concom, I think.
In the past, I think they've reported to both. I remember when Muffy Smick presented the plan, both to the Selectmen and the Conservation Commission, I believe, at the same night, but that's going back quite a few years.
So I think you're going to have the Conservation Commission overseeing it, and Sarah overseeing it.
Yeah, I think if you appointed a committee to assist in the community outreach and those kind of things that are obviously required in all of our plans, and Sarah is the staff person, I think you're going to see the same kind of dedication and commitment she had to the townwide master plan to move everybody along and meet those deadlines.
Yep.
And, you know, we didn't have that when we did this last plan update. We didn't have a very strong conservation agent on the planning piece of it. So obviously, we're going to be seeking that as we go out to advertise for a new Concom agent as well.
So we would have Sarah kind of in almost the role that she's playing with the development committee. She's almost a facilitator or catalyst, you know, she helps make things go along, I'm okay with that. But you're saying we need to, because I heard two different things, we need to establish a committee. That committee, Pete said, well, the Concom would take, you know, be responsible, and that committee would, I guess, report to the Concom. Are we saying that, or are we saying, no, this is a committee that would report to Sarah probably directly to the Board of Selectmen?
It's broader because it covers more than just Conservation Commission parcels, it covers land under the control of the Board of Selectmen, under the control of the Parks and Recreation Commission. It's not just, it would be too narrow to say it's just Conservation.
So we should have it be an independent, you're okay with that?
You should have representation from all of those groups.
I just, I hear about it through Deb, who's on the Concom, and I, so I track it from hearing it about it through the Conservation Committee.
All right, so we have an action in the near future to create this committee that has enough time to work on this before, get a consultant on board and get the job done prior to November. Doesn't mean the committee necessarily goes way after that, but in terms of what's prompting this whole thing, that's what we have to do.
Okay.
You're good?
I'm good.
You good with the article?
Yes.
All right. I will go along with the article, with the understanding we have to create that committee.
Absolutely.
But, okay, so I think we have, free nothing, recommend approval of the article.
We'll advertise on the website that we're looking for committee members once we get approval for the money.
When they are created, you know that I will be interested in the job they do addressing the maintenance issues of our open space.
And that's actually, going back to the memo that Dave Henkels wrote that's on the 2022 town meeting website, he calls that out specifically, that we have bought a tremendous amount of land, but we don't have a maintenance plan, so he does bring that up.
That alone would be worth $25,000.
I will make that happen.
Final article is Article 20, which is, in a sense, a backup article.
Yeah, Chris brought in a draft.
Yeah, my apologies, I didn't send it in advance, it's just a section.
Is this your draft?
Oh, is this a draft of what would go into the bylaw revision?
Yes, yes. Yeah, my sincere apologies for not sending it to in advance.
That's all right, that's all right. It's a short.
It's a lot shorter than what I got yesterday at three.
I can read this little amount fast.
That's easy.
That was you sent me?
Yeah. Yeah, Mark has seen it.
So I'm fine with this.
The language mirrors what is in the school building.
Yeah, okay. So does that mean we would withdraw Article 20 if this was added into that?
No, no, that would have to come from that petition. He's going to take them up together.
Okay.
However, the source, because that original article just addressed schools, and this is the rest of the bylaw, so you need that motion to be made separately under that article. Because it's talking about amending the permanent committee.
Right. So, well, so the one thing I might look at, Chris, and you may or may not be on board with the full amendment that we, I don't have yet, but if we have a full amendment and you are on board with that, I could even see us looking at incorporating this. The only reason I'm doing that, Mark, is that Scott said you didn't want a piecemeal.
Yeah, but it's, the starting point is you have an existing bylaw, which is a permanent planning and building committee. So even if the school thing failed, you could still go forward on that amendment with respect to the existing bylaw, the existing committee and how they operate.
That makes sense.
So then, should this be, I understand where you want it to show up, and I understand what you want it to say. Are you saying that Article 20 should be this wording to be incorporated as a further amendment to the bylaw?
Yes.
Okay, so Article 20 stays, it shows up as its own standalone amendment to the bylaw, effectively in addition to the bylaw.
Right.
It will be independent of however the vote goes on the school building committee revision by law, however that comes out. You know, everything gets voted down, it stays the way it is, the original draft from the revision committee passes, the amended revision passes, doesn't matter. This simply shows up through Article 20 as an amendment to whatever the heck the bylaw is by the time we come out of the town meeting.
Yes.
Okay. Got it?
And it can be dismissed if, right?
Well, I don't think there's anything quite like this.
No, because it's not, the original, the committee-driven amendment is limited to school projects.
Right.
You're proposing a public hearing requirement for municipal projects, all projects. So that has to, no matter what happens with the school, you still need this.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay.
Yep, I'm good with that. Yep, very much so.
You okay with that?
I am.
All right, recommend approval. I thought that one was going away, but it survived. That works. So those are all the answers we're going to get tonight for the articles. The only one that's still pending is going to be the one on the feasibility study funding.
Yes.
And we know what we're doing, we just have to have the light switch get turned on.
See how it goes.
Yeah, it goes. Okay, all right. Next, we have a vote to approve a contract with Beta Group Incorporated for peer review services related to the proposed Medfield State Hospital redevelopment. And I'm, just as an aside, well, there was a number of different areas that were called out in the scope, traffic studies, transportation, engineering, peer review services, stormwater management, zoning reviews, infrastructure reviews, landscape reviews, architecture reviews, and hazardous materials handling, handle it.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, what's happening is because of what's going on at the state hospital, correct me if I'm not interpreting what this is all about, and Trinity is funding, this isn't something we're paying for, this is coming out of funding that's coming from Trinity, yes? And this is for us to be able to evaluate all of the potential?
Peer review.
Yeah, okay.
And can I do just one quick diversion? I missed that there was a question that we had from Jeff Hyman. Nick, you may be able to answer. The question was, can the trustees help our town with getting information needed on the open space and rec questions, since they have a lot of our open space in Medfield?
I'm sure they were, I don't know if they were consultants in the past.
They're usually helpful, and we include their information in there, but the plan is really about how the town's going to manage the town-owned properties.
Okay. So Jeff, sorry for missing that, but...
But they are just, they are good partners with getting us any information that we need.
Some they would be.
Yeah.
Okay, great, keep going.
No, it's okay. No, he's my neighbor. I have him on for another reason. Don't go anywhere, Jeff. All right, so once I understood how this is all coming together and why it's coming together, I didn't have any pointed questions?
Okay, Pete?
No, I'm good.
I had one question. The first contract doesn't call out the total value of the contract, it just calls out rates, but there's no ceiling on it.
Correct. And part of that is because we're not sure, once we get the materials back from Trinity, subconsultants will provide it to Beta to say, here's the traffic report, can you give us an estimate as to what it'll cost you based on your hourly rates that you proposed? The environmental partners, one is similar, but they just said, it won't be, they just picked a number about a hat, really, they said $20,000 or whatever, not to exceed what.
So are we, we're going to sign a contract tonight? So what I'm antsy about is signing a contract that's effectively a blank check.
With the development committee overseeing this, it would be, it would just be under their purview to say, hey, Beta Group, what will this cost? Okay, go do it, and that's how we envision the process.
They don't have anything to do at this point, it's all going to be responsive, so you're going to be able to bracket it.
This is like an umbrella that they would, see, Nick is very masterful, he just rolled it back to the development committee that I'm on, so it's like, well, you figure it out.
The question I asked when I was reviewing the, basically overlapping because you don't know who you're going to need for what.
That was, yeah, that's my question.
Contracts basically mirror each other.
Okay.
So this is effectively kind of an umbrella contract, and individual tasks would be the point of negotiation for what the cost would be, and obviously Trinity's willingness to pay for it is the key. We haven't allocated any town funds for this, so the Trinity funding is an effective limit on how much funding is available.
The $500,000 included in the provisional designation agreement comes to the town for all expenses incurred in due diligence through construction. So it's, as we draw it down, we request additional increments, so that's, there's no real upper limit, but the intention would be, hey, Beta, what are your hourly rates to do this work? When we know what we want you to do, we'll provide you that to react to.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, Bill?
So this is very similar to what Concom has with one of their peer review. So basically, what happens there is you get something, say, from DCAM, the proponent, what they want to do. They recognize that they have to pay for it, but they typically have a review process. So what would happen is Concom would say, okay, we have this proposal from, you know, so-and-so from the state or whoever, what's your cost for doing it, for doing the peer review? And typically, what happens, for Concom anyway, is that they get a bid back for that particular task, and they have to run that through the proponent, and the proponent typically reviews and says yea or nay. And I'm just curious as to whether Trinity's going to look at what comes back.
It's more analogous to the 40B peer reviews, where we've had multiple consultants for specialized areas, and you have them on board, and you clear it with the applicant developer beforehand, and then you give them the assignment.
So they won't be looking at an individual, you know, they want such, so much for a traffic study or whatever, you know?
It's going to be worked out before they're basically given the okay to go forward, I assume, is that correct?
That's the intention, yes. We just don't have anything to react to, we're trying to have all these consultants.
No, until you see it, right. I mean, I understand. I was just curious if there was another review process with Trinity somewhere along the way when you actually got something and got a proposal or whatever for the cost.
After, in what sense, after the land disposition agreement is approved at town meeting, they go through the regular permitting process, and they still have to go through all those peer reviews?
No, no, I was talking about pre, you know, pre-signing the land disposition agreement, because you'll be doing some of this at the end of due diligence, I would assume, right?
Ahead of any term of town meeting. This will all happen, I don't think we would be informed enough to sign an agreement without peer review.
But Trinity's not looking at an individual bid or an individual peer review cost or anything else, you know, during this period?
No.
No, that's, that's fine, that's the only answer I was looking for. Thank you.
I would move to approve the contract with Beta Group Inc. for peer review services related to the proposed Medfield State Hospital development that was set forth in the meeting materials.
Second?
All is in favor.
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and then the second contract is a vote to approve a contract with environmental partners for peer review services related to the proposed Medfield State Hospital redevelopment. I make the observation that the roles or the things that were on the list of things they would do is remarkably similar to the first one. I was looking at, trying to discern if there was some qualitative difference between the two of them, and I couldn't tell.
So environmental partners will be doing the water and sewer aspect, for sure. Beta will be doing the transportation stuff, for sure, because they're, those are the two firms that handle a lot of the work here in town.
And in case it wasn't clear, both these consulting firms are already on the contract of the town for other matters, and environmental partners in particular works regularly with water and sewer projects here, so they're not coming in from the outside for the first time.
Okay, yeah. And I was talking to Christine earlier today, so I learned a lot about that, so I understand why we're doing this.
Okay. Bill?
Hopefully, it's my last question. Who, is anybody scheduled to do a peer review on any of the compliance with the environmental requirements in terms of like the, you know, notice of project change or, you know, the MEPA certificate activity? I know who was listed for some of that activity on the due diligence report, but that's changed, I think. So, I mean, that is still another...
That is still something that was classified under legal counsel, so we will, we obviously have a change coming.
We need a...
So, I mean, essentially, you almost need a peer review of that as well, I mean, in terms of the activity that they're going to be doing, so I just wanted to point that out, that's all.
Questions, Eileen?
Nope.
Nope.
I make it for the people in the audience, this one did have a specified value of $20,000. I think that's about all the information that I found pertinent in terms of anything that people might be interested in.
That just needs, if you reach the cap, you're going to have to come back.
Relative to the blank check coming, I made before, it's nice to know that we're talking five figures, probably not six or eight or 10, you know. Federal government would be a different issue, but here, we pay attention to this stuff. Can I have a motion?
I would move to approve the contract with environmental partners for peer review services related to the proposed Medfield State Hospital development, as was set forth in the meeting materials.
Second?
All is in favor.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries. Next, we have a vote to approve an inter-municipal agreement with the town of Foxborough for emergency vehicle technician services.
I learned a lot about this today.
I'm sure you did.
I, I met with Chief Carrick this afternoon and I actually said, well, we were, I learned a lot about his department and his goals, but I said, hey, can I ask you a question? We're going to bring up this, this discussion about fixing fire vehicles over in Foxborough. And what he basically said is they have some mechanics on their staff that specialize and you have to be certified to work on any emergical, emergency vehicle. And the rates that they offer are phenomenal. And the fact that it's that close to Medfield, they don't have to ship it to Connecticut, they don't have to drive it anywhere too far, was phenomenal. So he was, he's a big fan of this group.
If I can speak specifically to the contract, the one that made into the packet did not reflect some changes that Mark recommended because Foxborough and Franklin have a similar agreement, so we don't have a final contract yet, so if you want to wait till your next meeting or contemplate an approval based on Mark's recommendations, however, if you want to proceed.
Is there any reason why we shouldn't just wait until we see the actual contract?
No, I don't think there was.
I don't, I don't think there's an urgency on it.
For what it's worth.
Of course, now that I said that, something's going to break, but.
We got two new first lines.
Oh, don't, don't, don't go there. I was there when he's got, he's got an issue with some things right now.
Yes, he does.
Pete, do you have any, did you have any questions?
No.
Okay. The only, Nick, I had, just so you know, I was curious about the term, I said page two. Yeah, oh, if we were going to sign the contract, it turns blank on page two?
Yeah, one of the things, I was pointing it out.
And then the only other question I had is on page five.
There's fairly extensive amendments that I originally proposed when this came to Franklin and we then sent it back and Foxborough in turn ran it by their town councils and we came up with a revised agreement that everybody was comfortable with. So Nick's done a pretty good job of incorporating all that into our Medfield contract now and so it just has to basically go back and say, hey, remember when you did the deal with Franklin and your council looked at it and agreed to this?
Okay, so the other question I had is on page five. I'm listed as the point of contact. I noticed Franklin, it was the town administrator and given, I'm assuming this is more than a one-year contract while I'm the chair of the board, I'm thinking it's probably more appropriate to town administrator. I don't, you put me down if you want, it's just that.
No, that's fine. I just like to, you know, not publicize when I'm trying for a coup. I just like to keep that high, but that's fine. We can change.
Well, I was trying to not.
I know.
Okay, so we'll defer, we'll defer that one until we get the updated version. Next, vote to approve renewal of an inter-municipal agreement with the town of Mansfield for a medical director. This is, I think, similar to the, the one we approved maybe two years ago, I think, or there, maybe it was three years ago now.
I think it might be three years ago now at this point. Yeah.
So I, if you're.
I got, I got a good briefing from the chief on this one, saying, oh, yes.
Your memory is probably.
That we're one of 11 towns that are, are under this doctor out of Mansfield?
Okay. Pete, any questions?
None.
The only question I had is this is, this wasn't, we didn't originally have it with Mansfield, right?
Norwood, right? I think it was Norwood, well, originally it was Norwood and then.
So did we pick, did we change people, medical directors or?
I think our medical director moved.
He moved?
It's my, yeah.
So it's the same, okay.
And Norwood shut down.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I talked to Holly Rand today about this. Yeah, yeah.
So that's what I'm getting at.
Oh, yeah, she was, she was super helpful.
Because of the hospital over at Norwood.
Yep.
So this may actually still be the same medical director, just operating out of a different setting.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yes, it's the gentleman we met when we were doing the ALS.
Okay. So entertain a motion there.
Move to approve.
Yeah, it says renewal, actually.
Renewal of the inter-municipal agreement with the town of Mansfield for a medical director as set forth in the meeting materials.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, that's approved, done. Next item, vote to approve the submission of a statement of interest for the Dale Street School to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. This is, I think, this is a statement of, this is a statement of interest that's basically letting the MSBA know that the town would like to be considered for admission into the MSBA school funding process. I want to, as the chair, I'm a signatory, just the chair of the school committee is and superintendent. So this is basically, the way I talk about it is this is buying the ticket on the merry-go-round. That's all it is, is buying the ticket on the merry-go-round. It does not constitute a commitment to go down this path if that's not what we decide to do. But if we decide not to do it at this point in time, it basically, so we're not on the merry-go-round at all. So if we wished at some point that we could reach for the brass ring, you're not on the merry-go-round to even be able to reach for it.
Right.
So this is kind of keeping an option open. I would make the observation in the statement of interest that I hadn't appreciated before, probably because I didn't do a good enough job of reading the earlier statement of interest. There's actually two requests in there, one of which is the priority of asking for funding for their, for the renovation improvements that are needed at Dale Street School. That's one part of the request. And then the separate request is to actually get funding for a new school. And I somehow or another hadn't appreciated that until I took the time to really read through this. I thought the, by and large, the rather lengthy description of the things at Dale Street School that gave rise to the need for a new, to do something here, I thought they were compelling. And that's not to say it was all doom and gloom, but in some ways, the write-up was more, it painted a better picture of some of the things about the Dale Street School that are still in good shape. So this was not like just a one-sided description about, you know, watch out, the roof beams might fall on your head when you walk through the door, but it pointed out a number of issues around the space and how the space was used or couldn't be used. As I read it.
They talked about a form of construction that I wasn't familiar with, that they said isn't usually typically used because it's more expensive apparently, so.
It was the Pan, the Pan Foundation or something like that. Said you could see it. I have to pay more attention next time I go near the Dale Street School, the, look for the Pan.
But it was only in part of the school that you could see it, I think, so.
So if the, the school committee has already voted to approve the statement of interest or signing the statement of interest, the issue on the table is, are we prepared to approve having me as the chair sign the statement of interest? So.
Can I just ask a couple of questions?
Absolutely, yeah.
So, so this is more or less, and I'm going to look to you, Jess, if you, so the, the statement of interest that was submitted for the first go-around and the statement of interest that I just received yesterday, more or less are the same document, right?
Essentially, yeah. And modernized, made sure that, you know, we have updated, it's been five years since we've done the deal.
Right, but some of the data.
More or less, yeah.
Because some of the data points still continue to reference 2017 and now we're in 2022. And, and the reason I ask this is if I was sitting at the state and I saw a town that, that we accepted, they, they didn't vote to support, then they submit paperwork and then I look at it and I think, okay, it's more or less the same documents and we're five years later, or soon to be five years later, is that, does that reflect poorly that we didn't put more data into it and, and maybe there isn't that much more data to put into it? But I just think when I look at census, I look at numbers, you know, like some of the questions I'd be intrigued by, living here in the town and seeing what goes on with the schools, is are we, is, are, is the enrollment really going up? Are we losing kids to, to, to services that are being provided by other towns? Like, what are the trends that we're seeing and would that be pertinent to this report since it's X number of years later since we've submitted the first one? Just, I mean, because if I was at the state, I'd look at that and some, maybe go, okay, do they want it or is this going to just be another mental exercise where we're, they're not going to end up supporting it again? And that's, I don't want that if we go with the MSBA.
I think that when the, now, I am going to qualify first that I know nothing about the MSBA or how they may think. I have, you know, I have followed the process. My understanding is that you take each application as it comes, that when funding fails sometimes at the town level, that doesn't mean that the need for the building is any less.
Right.
And that they will look at coming up for the building. Now, there are variations in terms of population, you know, and we can give them updated numbers as we get them over time. I think that we're looking at, as we're going through the hospital process, we're looking at getting NASDAQ to update our numbers. These are numbers that are, you don't have to have like the solid numbers at this point for this application. So I'm not terribly worried about it. Some of the stuff that references 2017, you know, like in the facilities plan where Jerry went through and did that when he was here, that has not yet been updated. Those things are still issues. But in essence, I mean, they've done a significant amount of updating in terms of data, but whatever hasn't been updated, updated is simply not there right now, right? So, so which points are you specifically looking at, I think, because they do have it.
Well, I also.
And we don't have it committed to memory, so I just.
No, that's right, no, no, no. Trust me, I've got 40 pages at 3:00 yesterday on top of, what, I have 153 before that, so I don't have it memorized either.
I did, I did confirm the education plan, the back part of what we got, that's not part of the submission. That was for our benefit. So all that stuff that was at the backend is not something that goes anywhere.
Okay. And, and trust me, I support in the spirit of going forward because, to your point, if we don't punch the ticket, we can't get a punch later. So I'm just, I'm just saying this out loud so that we make sure that if, we haven't submitted it yet, we have until the 29th.
The 29th at midnight.
You know, and even like when I look at, so I did, I talked to Christine about this when I saw census 2010 and we're now in 2022. She advised me that we have to go off of the Fed.
We're going off 2010 census because we don't have any 2020 census yet, you know, it's 2020.
Which is kind of crazy, but, but, yeah.
Correct, it hasn't been fully released yet.
It's insane, isn't it?
Yeah. And then just even the school enrollment, I mean, I'm not here to debate that tonight either, but you look at what's going on and I, I, I know what we're trying to do at the state hospital, so 334 units, mainly one, two, a handful of threes, says that's not really going to be a significant impact. And, and a lot of the other buildings that are going up are for seniors and others. So that, to me, I don't see an artificial inflation of numbers, but, two cents.
I mean, I think, again, we are going through the NASDAQ process right now in terms of vetting hospital properties, make sure that our populations are, you know, not going to explode, and we always worry about them. People that might say this, but they're taking the pipe on, you know, and all of a sudden you get really young families and that class travels, those two or three classes travel through. And so, but we literally cannot predict those right now in the timeframe that we have for that. So we can go off our current estimations and our current NASDAQs, but we can't, you know, kind of project. And honestly, this just gets us invited into the program should they, should they ask us to do that. So there's no.
Oh, so these numbers don't stick to us? Like, it's not, each week we get it in.
No, it's, it's, nobody's going to put us on the stand and say, you must, you know, you said 2,700 by this point and we have 2,650. What is going on here? No, you know, the MSBA is quite realistic about how things fluctuate. They, you know, they've built and continue to build schools all over the state. Melis has, you know, just been invited into their program for a new high school after doing their entire elementary program. So they have a certain specification around what the data and how it changes, what it looks like and how it changes.
As long as it's not binding, that's, that's.
No, no. And in fact, that's the reason that within my own meeting, I read through the language twice, once for the public to really think about it and once for our board or committee to vote on, because it does very specifically say that there is no ding, essentially, for not taking it or for not being accepted into, right? So that the town has mu, as much right to walk away and say, this is not the right decision for us and that that is not a politically inexpedient or bad decision.
No, absolutely, it shouldn't be.
Yeah, so.
Through the discussion we had last week, the issue of doing, if that were to be what we did, doing it in a, with timing in a way that doesn't sit there and cause MSBA to have mud on their face for having committed to one thing and then we surprise them, that's recognized in this discussion, so just so you, you recognize that. The other, the other minor point was, I did actually ask about the email you sent with the different square footages. The square footage, the bigger one that's there is the more accurate, complete square footage. That's, so I, I confirmed that this afternoon when we talked. What it was is that I think Leftfield had one number.
Great, well, you know what it is, is that when you, when you discuss education and educational space.
Right.
You're talking about floors above the ground, but when you're an architect, you have to think about the entire space. That includes the basement and all of the, you know, all of the kind of facilities that happen down there. Very few schools have basements like that right now.
So I asked the question.
There are two different kinds of, you know, realities in the world. There's educational space and there's architectural design, so.
The, the point I'd make about this SOI as I read it, this is not an SOI saying, here's what we want to do about our problem. This SOI is just saying, we got really, you know, school that has some real problems and we need help.
Yep.
And so when I read that, this, that way, it's like.
They would like to explore your help.
Think we.
And they would like to explore help in us. I think that that's really, it's more of an exploration than an absolute commitment on either end to make things happen. So for better or for worse, it gives us different options.
Again, I think it goes back to what I said a little while ago. At town meeting, we're going to have citizens that are still going to question, where are we going? We are moving this along, we're, you know, we're, we are going to get a school renovated or new school coming out of Highwater, so.
Pete?
So I think this is a step that the town should take in its best interest and that it makes absolute sense for us to go ahead, so I'm on board.
I've had all my questions answered over the course of discussions.
I would move to.
We got a comment from the floor.
Is this what you were referencing, guys?
Is that what you were referencing?
That piece, yeah, that's the part of it.
Okay.
Jerry, Pod 7, curve. So in theory, you know, anything that gets us a school as soon as possible, you know, I, I totally support being open-minded and exploring all the options. My only concern is since the vote in November, we listened earlier to the feasibility money not being released until right before the town meeting and the bylaw committee, even though this passed last May, to look at the bylaw is being rushed to make this happen. And my understanding is the statement of interest you got yesterday as, as a selectman and that the school committee voted on it without even having a document and in front of them, that they, we requested it and it was not available at the time that the school committee approved moving ahead with the statement of interest. My concern really has to do with, with the word process. If we're going to be transparent this time around, getting documents to everyone as early as possible so that there can be questions, so we can ask questions, right? Getting it the day before with differences in enrollment and differences in projection and then hearing we have a state hospital project with Dr. Martin was involved with the master planning and said there wouldn't be any more than 150, that's what they provided back then, and that was before we got an actual bid from, from Trinity. So I, I would say that each step we take with this school is going to be under very close scrutiny and I would hold us as a town to a high standard of transparency in getting documents out openly as early as possible so everyone can see them to feel that this is being done above board. And I, I feel like that did not happen here, so I worry about this being the start of a process where, well, we'll worry about it later. So I worry about this being the start of a process where, well, we'll worry about it later. We've seen that movie, It Doesn't End Well, Someone Jumps Out With A Mask. So if we can stop that early, and I'm not taking a side on either one of it, but just for each of the committees to put documents out as early as possible. And if you're considering it within 24 hours and it's 40 pages, we haven't seen it. So, you know, it just would be good to carry more transparency going forward because of the sensitivity of, of, you know, the, the subject.
No arguments.
Yeah, no, you can, she knows, I sent her no, like, wait a minute, I'm just getting that, because I'm getting trained to look on Friday afternoons now.
Chris, I do think you read the SOI before I did, just for the record. I saw your email before I.
But in the spirit of interest, this is the right thing to do.
Right. So, Chris, so I would assume that the board of selectmen want to sign a document, sign off on a document that feels accurate, right? Correct?
Well, yes. I think the other piece of that is that I see this as signing off on a document that gives us, that allows us to have continued flexibility going forward as opposed to not signing off on the document and winding up basically not having one of two options that we might have. So it's, I said, like I said, it's buying the ticket to get on the merry-go-round. It's not anything more than that.
So, I mean, I just have, in terms of the, the square footage discrepancy, I just think it's really important, especially on one of the discrepancies that I had brought forth, is that the last SOI that we submitted to MSBA, that was where it was stated that it was 53,029 square feet. Okay? Now, this current SOI, it was stated 67,249 square feet. So there were no architects involved with or at Left Field. These are numbers that we provided as the district to MSBA in two different SOIs that do not match. So I'm not really sure that that explanation.
What I've heard is these are better numbers because they're using all the full square footage as opposed to just the education space.
Okay.
I'm not sure, if I would, only someone who is as thorough in auditing past documents as you are, Chris, would probably even catch that. But leaving that aside, I, yes, we want an accurate SOI. I try, that, and so I'm trusting that that's the more accurate number now that people have more time to think about it. On the other hand, if I, I'm trying to picture someone in MSBA going, oh, wait a minute, if it was, if it was 67,000 feet, that's a really, really important thing. And if it's 53,000, eh, not a big deal. So I'm not sure in terms of the point we are in, the process and the purpose of this thing, I don't know if that's, I'm not arguing we want to be accurate. I don't know as a practical matter that that has much operational impact one way or the other, other than we want to be accurate, because that gives us credibility.
Well, it has to do with, it ties to the enrollment projections, because if you're basically saying that you project, you expect to have significant increase in enrollment, then you're basically saying you want a percentage of, percentage increase in space. And that percentage of, of space is different depending upon what your existing square footage is. So you know what I'm saying? So you look at that and you say, okay, well.
Well, but doesn't it depend if some?
Yeah, I'm not sure that would hold.
If I could provide to your.
Well, I think though, something that was, though, Chris, something I heard was that some of the space that, that has been discovered is, is basement, whatever. So I guess if they, if it's classroom, classroom, classroom to classroom ratio, I think that would impact. But understanding how they, they delineated the area for Dale, I don't think they're calling that all educational. And you can certainly.
That's correct, actually. And that's, that's what I would want to clarify.
Yeah, but it's actually not, we don't really have any documentation of that clarification in any place that I know of.
I think the MSBA will ask questions if they, as well.
And then the other, the other clarification or point is, there's a question here on the SOI that says, does the district have a master educational plan that includes facility goals for this building and all school buildings in the district? And the answer to this is yes. We have the educational plan that was submitted with the last project, but we do not have a master plan for all buildings, school buildings in the district. A master educational plan for all school buildings in the district. And the, the, the language that is, that accompanies this yes answer talks only about the education plan that was submitted for the last project. There's nothing in here about a master educational plan. And in fact, our strategic plan for the school district expired this year. So we don't even have the strategic, a new strategic plan. So I just think that that's not an accurate answer in this SOI.
So you're, so the point you're making, Chris, is that the answer, the explanation that's provided, this answer cites the education plan for the school that's under consideration for potential replacement. It does not address the second part of that question that basically says, do you have an education plan for the entire school district?
Mm-hmm.
I'll leave the.
I would like to, I think that I can thank you in my.
Good.
So there was a five-year and is and continues to be a five-year strategic plan, which we, of course, went through a pandemic. And so some of those things and those goals continue on while we are now reassessing and beginning the new strategic plan to extend our current goals. So I would argue that indeed we do have a education plan and a master plan for the entire district. Whether there is a, you know, Medfield 2021 date that is a hard and fast expiration date, I hardly think is something that was put into any kind of bylaw or anything that keeps us from now continuing with those goals and that the reassessment, as we have always spoken about with the strategic plan, is about extending and understanding what happens in the future based on those goals that the community came up with. We do have a plan over the summer to begin looking for an RFP or do an RFP for that.
So there's really, it's, it's a little bit of semantics. Do we have a master goal? Yes.
So before we go too far down whether it's accurate or not, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to kind of have two, I have two reactions. Number one, Chris, I hear what you're saying. I trust that the school committee is going to want to put in as compelling an SOA as possible. So the question on the table as well, you didn't really answer the full question because you didn't really answer the question about, does the district have a full education plan? That's useful feedback and perhaps that, you know, perhaps a statement that says, well, we had, we had a plan, we had strategic goals, we had this thing.
We have a plan.
It expired, but the COVID, you know, because of COVID, we have not updated it. That would address the broad district.
There's no expiration, that's the thing.
If I'm MSBA and I read the answer to this, I know that the only answer I got was for the school. So part of me says, well, either I'm going to ding you because you didn't give me the full answer and I'll be able to tell, or you all can decide to add that last piece that addresses the second half of the question. And it is, then it's out there. But I.
And, you know, the MSBA is not like an anonymous state agency that, that, you know, just kind of clicks boxes. We have had an in-depth conversation with them over the last five years. And the people who would work and kind of oversee a Medfield plan are many of the same people we already know. There are things that happen in paperwork and there are things that happen in questions. And that's when you pick up a phone and say, I'm not sure about this. You know, so that that is something that's part of the MSBA process. And it is perfectly accurate to say that the school has a long range, long-term strategic plan. We are in that strategic plan right now. We have never said the strategic plan is done and it's over. It was simply named 2021.
So I think Chris's point is, but it doesn't say that in the answer here. That's fair.
I'll leave you more strategic plan and the master education plan are different.
Hold on a second. When Gusky was in the floor.
So what I'm getting at is, okay, we got, we got the lay of the land. There's a quality on this SOI. Either it has enough of an answer or it doesn't. Point taken, what you're saying, that second half wasn't addressed.
Is there continued?
So I think what's really important is when you think about the MSBA, is that they're dealing with all facilities. Okay, so this question, based on MSBA's standpoint of funding school facilities, is they're trying to get at here is a master facility plan, not the educational plan. And the only reason I mention the strategic plan is because in the strategic plan, it has one chapter basically on facilities. But what the MSBA is trying to get at here is basically, do you have a master facility plan for all your school buildings? So that possibly five years down the road or 10 years down the road or 20 years down the road, we might have a general idea of what else might be coming down the road in terms of projects from Medfield. So I think that that is what they're trying to get at with this question. And they just happened to ask it as, do you, do you have a master educational plan that includes facility goals for this building and all school buildings in the district? So it's a, more of a facility plan that they're looking for.
That's easy, because we do have Jerry's facility plan.
So, and the way the question was answered was only specific to that one building and had nothing to do with the master facility. I'm just saying that, that this may, if they can edit, if you can edit this to update it, to be clear, to actually answer the question, it might be better. Because right now, the way it's answered is not, it's not accurate.
Assuming what they wrote isn't what they really meant. Because if they asked for the education plan, then it is accurate, what they talked about, whether they have full plan. I mean, this is, I'm not sure as a practical matter, what, what changes other than, it's obvious to me that the application should be as accurate, responsive and complete as we can get it to make a compelling case that we have a, we have an old school that needs to be replaced. That, to me, is what this whole thing is about. I don't know what the MSBA does for stuff. I can see how understanding the education plan that leads to different configurations of facilities is a compelling case in the context of reviewing this, what's said in the statement of interest. You make a good point. If the MSBA is saying, gee, let us know if you're thinking about other projects coming down the pike, that's fine. But then it's too bad they didn't just ask that, because that would have been a little simpler. So I'm, I'm trying to visualize what the right correction would be that's a useful correction, that actually literally answers the question that may or may not have a spin in the direction you're going. So I, I take, I take your point as feedback. I think the school committee can take that as feedback. You were going to do some, you were going to do some revisions if, if there's something there that would make sense. Then that's useful.
Do we, what's, did, did you, was there any answer to the, the last date for the last NASDAQ enrollment report? Do we have, what's the latest that we received?
Wasn't really clear to me that that was the driver in this SOI. That's the, I, I don't know when, know whether the report's available yet or not. But I think it's an important, to me, that's an important question we get around to figuring out what kind of school we need.
Oh, yeah, yeah, because that was one of the big problems, the MS. He was saying that we needed a bigger school than we wanted, so.
Right.
Well.
Sorry, it's not that it's not an important question, Chris. It's just I'm, I'm not, I didn't see it jumping out at me.
We don't want to boil the issue.
No, I, I. I understand, but when you, when there's a statement in here that the state hospital property, property, along with the recent 40B developments, has the potential to increase our enrollment significantly, then, and then there's also reference to NASDAQ being, that we're, we're in discussion with NASDAQ around enrollment, then there is a valid question to ask, so where is, what is the last, last NASDAQ report that we have? Because the last one that was made public was in January 2021, and we usually get it annually. So my question is, is do we have another NASDAQ report that's floating around out there that has more recent numbers?
I think that that's something that I really can't pull up right now because I don't have the documentation, you know? I wouldn't be able to, first of all, it doesn't necessarily obtain this conversation because this is about an SOI. If that's something that you'd like to ask, we can get that data for you about when the next.
All right, I think that's what's, I think that's what's been just asked.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Okay. But it's not relevant.
I can't, won't answer it right now because I simply wouldn't be able to give you the correct information.
Okay. All right. We good?
We're good.
Need a motion.
I would move to approve the submission of the statement of interest for the Dale Street School to the Massachusetts School Building Authority as set forth in the meeting materials.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye aye.
Opposed. Okay.
I just, sorry to interrupt the back.
We, we have to.
Form of both.
Oh, yes, you actually must read the.
You have to read the actual language for it.
Do you need it?
I have it here.
There should be one in each of your seats.
Sorry. I only like do this once every.
I wouldn't make you need again this week.
Yeah, thanks for catching that. This is, all right.
Chairman, I would move to have kind of.
You got to read this, Pete.
convene in an open meeting.
No, 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 this one, this one right here, here. You can.
Easier off the paper, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, resolved. Having convened in an open meeting on March, April 26, 2020, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the board of selectmen of Medfield in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances has voted to authorize superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated April 29, 2029, for the Dale Street School located in 45 Adams Street, Medfield, Massachusetts, which describes and explains the following deficiencies of the property priority categories for which the, an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Replacement, renovation or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility. Replacement and/or addition of obsolete buildings in order to provide a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of the application, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority or commits to the town of Medfield to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. I think there's a two missing in there, but I guess that. Is that the, is that the vote?
It's the.
Motion.
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 Second.
Second.
There's never be a roll call or anything, right? It's just, all those in favor?
Aye aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. That thing read like a pharmaceutical ad. All right, so that's done. We now have executed our responsibility on the SOI in its entirety. Thank you, I hope. All right. Load this stuff here. Okay, next is a vote to approve participation in a regional grant application to the municipal. I should make sure you change this one, I bet you this is already changed.
Yeah.
Yeah. Vote to approve participation in a regional grant application to the municipal vulnerability program with the Napa River Watershed Association for a strategic plan for challenges posed by climate change and a watershed-wide flood model. And there's two votes. Vote to approve participation in a regional grant application of the municipal vulnerability program with the Charles River Watershed Association for a watershed-wide flood model, regional culvert assessment and concept designs for flood mitigation projects. Can we do these all together, all three as a single vote that approves all?
I think that's fine.
So the third vote that's, that's tied in here is a vote to authorize the town administrator to submit partnership letters for both grant applications.
So moved.
Second.
So, so is there any discussion, anybody have questions?
I've, I've read through this. I was advised that this is the right.
We would really like to do this, yeah.
So I would, and I would point out that this, these requests in particular came with a recommendation of the DPW director that these are good things for us to do.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, and they, for those that get out in the, in the audience, each one of these comes with a $10,000 commitment to support from the town, except that half of that can be in kind. Did I get that right?
Yes, the final numbers, the one for the Napa will be 12,448.
Of which half could be in kind?
Yeah, 5,000 will be in kind, 5,000 will be cash and will help them with their public participation with a $2,400 cash contribution as well. The Charles River one is $1,000, and that can be all in kind.
Wow.
Yeah.
You like even back?
I know. That was, that's why we moved for the revision when that came in today.
But then it went back in. This is good. Okay. Motion.
We already moved in a second.
Sorry. All those, all those in favor.
That's what got to chuckle in the crowd.
Aye aye.
I'm easily distracted. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
I was moving fast, Gus, because I didn't want to have to read it after you'd already read it once.
Well, that was good. I was, I was really disappointed in that last motion. You didn't use whereas once. Okay, so this approved, got it. Number 10, vote to approve the ever-source electric vehicle charger site house agreement. Do you have questions?
I have a lot of questions on this one. So how did this come about?
That would be a good starting question, huh?
And the reason, so I have a neighbor who has a Tesla. So the moment I got this, I sent it off to him and said, okay, help me understand all this charging stuff and what makes sense and, and from, you know, a town perspective, you know, what's this all about? And Jeff is still on, which makes me happy. He, there's, there's a concern of, okay, if it's there and somebody plugs in, who's paying for the electricity that they're drawing out of it, right? Because right now, I believe the way it's done, the town is paying for it. Then the question also is, are, the way these stations are being laid out, does it make sense? Are we, are we putting in something that we don't need? Is it almost too powerful for what's, what's, like, I'm just questioning, like, as this is coming about. as this is coming about, where did this come from? Are we really voting on it tonight? Are we trying to do an informational session, get questions about what's being proposed? Cause this was a doozy.
There's a few different pieces else. So to start with, we, the EverSource has what they call the make-ready program, where they will come out and install all the necessary background support, conduits, new transformers. They will install everything so that a site is ready for somebody to come in and put in electric vehicle chargers. So EverSource has a financial commitment and they have people under, under contract to, that do this work all throughout the Commonwealth. So first part is, and what we're doing at this phase is saying, let's go take advantage of this program to make three sites ready in, in Medfield. The one before you is the only one under the quota selection control. The other two would be on school, on school grounds. So those will go to the school committee if they're, um, if the school department would have to sign off on those two. So in this case, Jane's Avenue, across the street, um, they will install all the necessary equipment to have the site be ready for electric vehicle chargers for up to five. The town is committed, if it approves this agreement, to install two for a five-year period. So that's, that's the charger, that's the site host agreement. The subsequent piece to that is, what do we do with it? What do we do about an electric vehicle charger? That's where the green communities grant application from the spring that was submitted, um, we secured the approval for three electric vehicle chargers. So when you think of an electric vehicle charger, it's for two spots. So we have six spots for three electric vehicle chargers, which these programs will pay for. So what we're doing is taking advantage of EverSource to have all the backend work done to put these in. The town's commitment is to go find electric vehicle chargers that it likes and install those. So it's kind of a two-step process. Um, and this is step one. The step two would be, you know, how do we set up the electric vehicle charger? Are we charging for, um, people to use electricity or is it free? What platform do we want to use and what model or brand of charger do we want to install? That's all within our control and to be decided once, uh, we have a chance to sit down and take a look at the options that are out there.
And this is something the town pay, we, we, once EverSource does their bit, the rest is out of our pocket.
The, so, yes. So in theory, we could pick a electric vehicle charger that would be funded by the grant. So the town won't pay any money. The state will pay the money. The town will be on the hook for either the electricity or the software system to collect payments.
Okay.
So, so the town isn't paying anything because we have state grant money through the.
No, we're not paying anything for the purchase of the charger.
Correct.
The electricity.
Or the software to collect payments depending on which route we want to go. And, and we may make money on it at the end of the day, in, in theory.
Yeah, if we do the.
Or alternatively, we won't.
Yeah.
Nick, can you go back? You said, you, you lost me when you said there were three spots, but six chargers. And I missed what.
So we'll have three, we'll eat, we have a grant for three separate electric vehicle charging platforms. And when you, so each has two spots.
Yeah.
So it's six spots.
Six spots. Correct.
Got it.
The other two sites considered are at the high school and over at Wheelock, both on school property.
And those, how many site, how many parking spaces are those?
Would be the same thing. Would be, so here in Jane's Ave, it'll be one charger with two spots. Then over at the high school, it'll be one charger with two spots. Over at Wheelock, one charger for two spots.
Oh, good. I agree. Cause the diagram showed like five spots.
It would, I'll be, it would be ready for up to five here over at Jane's Ave. Each of them.
But we're only talking about one.
Putting one charger with two spots here, one at the school, one at, okay.
Which differs from what we see over at Bank of America where they have, I think, is it three charging spots set up?
That sounds right, but I don't, I don't know.
I think it's three.
And, but yet not, not enough parking spaces for six cars to be there at the same time, which is goofy. Right? So.
Yeah.
And they may have been, they may have also used the make-ready program because it's open to anybody. It's not just municipalities that can take advantage of it.
Yeah. I have a question I was gonna ask you. So basically though, these will be open to anybody, right?
Yes.
Considering that 109 is what, the second, third busiest street in the state.
And what's interesting, and so I was, I was picking my neighbor's brain on this before we came to the meeting to understand. Uh, so Good Morning America just did this thing with, uh, with one of their reporters going from, I think, you know, somewhere up north all the way down to Miami and talking about having to stay somewhere for 30 minutes to attempt to, to get a charge back in. My neighbor Jeff was saying, you know, that certain cars will take significantly longer than that. So if you're going to dinner, let's say at the avenue, and you plug in, you're not going to get that much energy from it. The concern would be, and this is where I think, Nick, the idea of using the software is, is someone is just going to park it. And that's parking for town hall as well as at the avenue, right?
It's parking for every downtown business.
Everybody.
So the last thing you want is someone just kind of parking and leaving for the
weekend or whatever. That, that's where you incentivize people to pay. That you can leave it there for an hour or two, maybe get that for free. But if you're going to leave it there for an extended period of time, that's when, that's when having the software, in my opinion, makes sense. Cause now we're going to, we're going to charge that person. And from what my neighbor was saying, the ChargePoint app is very easy to use, very sophisticated. And, you know, after an hour, you see your dashboard, it kicks in and starts charging you. So I think if, the only thing I'll say tonight is if we're going forward with this, that we should have a manner in which to, to monitor those spots. So someone just can't leave it there and take off to Florida for the week and come back and know their car's ready. All right. We've got to incentivize them to move it out.
I have, I'm harder notes than that. I, I don't see why we're paying for any electricity. So if, if the ChargePoint lets you say you pull in, you want to charge up, then you charge up and you, then you get charged for your charging.
It, well, from what I found out tonight, I thought it was like, you know, I look at my electric bill and it can be high if I, if you've got your AC running or whatever. From what, and again, Nick, I'll go to you and the experts on this, but I believe it's not cra, like if you were to leave it on there for X number of minutes, it might be as much as maybe $5. So it's not, and finally, $5 adds up, don't get me wrong. Um, but from what, from what, um, Jeff was educating me on is, like where he works, they have, uh, stations up there. I think, I forget, I think he said 10 or 20 that, so they encourage employees to do that. And, um, and here in town, I don't think we should be giving it for free, period. But if there's an introductory period to get people to know that it's there, to encourage people that have electric cars to maybe come downtown, there's a short window. And then maybe after the first three, six months of having it, it's not, it's not free anymore, period.
Well, so my view is a little different. First off, you have 300 miles range on, on a charge. So people who live in town, who happen to come downtown probably can make it home with their own charger without too much difficulty. So, so the issue for me is, are, you know, basically people who can afford to buy Teslas can charge up for free? Are we gonna have, are we gonna have a, a parallel amenity for, because the taxpayers pay for that?
Hmm.
So maybe what we should have is both free charging, but we could also have free Blue Rhino tank exchanges for the people who don't have electric vehicles. So that we just kind of, we put it all, we put it, well, so my point, my point is, this is one of the most regressive policies I can think of to basically throw the burden of, of cost. And maybe it's only $5, but all the more reason, if that's all it is, then it's more like a parking meter. You just come in and you use it.
I'm not opposed to that. Don't get me wrong. I, I thought it was going to be more like if you plugged in, it was like 30, 40 bucks. So I'm like, okay, that's, that's a lot.
Yeah. I, I don't think, I don't think that, I, you know, whether we make, I'm not trying to make money on this. I'm just saying I don't see a good reason why taxpayers should subsidize a small group of people that have electric vehicles by giving them free charging. Um, the other thing I didn't understand, Nick, and maybe it's got to do with how many of these we're trying to put in, but I would have expected for someplace like that, we would go with the quick charge rather than the four hour, this, this thing, the terms of the contract basically say you have to promise that you've got people who can stay here for four hours. So that tells me this charge is like a four-hour charge where there's this other version that's a quick charge. And if, given this is a public place, you know, I'm gonna go into Avenue, I'm gonna go run an errand into the town hall, or I'm gonna go shop at, at the, you know, Brothers. It seems to me it's the quick charge that we ought to be having for people that would be convenient. We'd still pay, still gotta pay for it. But you get more people cycling through it, it would be more useful. So I was confused how the decision was made not to do that. Contract requires, if it's quick charge, I think it's between one and three, you commit to. And if it's not, it's between two and 10 or two and 12. So it.
Yeah, that's, that's right. I'm looking at that section now.
Yeah. So I, I'm sitting there, well, how do, why don't we do the quick charge, which is probably what people really need, especially in a place like this where a lot of people are coming in and out. The other question I have.
I think that's, that was, that wasn't a decision anybody made. That was EverSource's, that's their, that's their terminology. I don't know if that's what, they don't want to build out electricity for, to meet the demands. I, I can't comment on that piece of it, but that wasn't something, we, we didn't go to them and say, it's gonna be a certain limit.
We can talk to Penny and see.
You should ask him.
We can, we can follow up with Penny, but.
It literally is a matter of convenience. If you're trying to make it possible for people to charge up their cars.
So Jeff, who actually owns a Tesla, who's very knowledgeable in this, raise his hand.
Thank you. Maybe Jeff can come on and tell us about this. May I speak? Yeah, he keeps trying. I should let you watch this thing. Yes, Jeff, you can.
I invited him to this meeting. I want him to.
Jeff Hyman.
Glad you stuck.
Well, I told him, I'm like, raise your hand. You, you, you can chime in on this. Your firsthand knowledge.
All these states show in a registry too. It's, the electric owners know where the local stations are, you know, so.
There we go.
Hi, Jeff.
It's a good conversation talking about electric vehicles. So I've owned a car vehicle for 12 years. And I am also a commission member on the Zero Mission Vehicle Commission for the state of Massachusetts. You've been on that for about four years. The, there is an incentive for states, there are 11 states through a memo understanding to get, and specifically for Massachusetts, 300,000 electric vehicles on our roads by 2025. So there is this statewide initiative in all of those other states. And I think what everybody's saying is true. Through incentives and grants, the Massachusetts electric vehicle incentive program will pay for 100% for, for charging stations and, it sounds like our utility is going to pay for infrastructure, but, you know, for government property, you can get up to 100%. So one thing we have to understand is right there, these are not parking spaces. They are charging spaces. So they're, they're really there for people to charge and move on. And, and as, as was stated, the software that companies that make charging stations, it's easy to use. There's dashboards. You can, you can, you can have it free for 30 minutes or an hour, and then you can charge after that. And you can customize it. It all goes through a credit card. It gets paid to the charging station owner. So that, that's, that's important for discussion. For me, it's, it comes down to the choice. So a level two charging station is the most popular charging station out there. And that, that provides about 10 to upward 20 miles per hour of charging. The infrastructure is simpler than a direct, current, fast charging system that requires a lot of infrastructure. And that's maybe used for 20 minutes, but that's not how it would be used necessarily at a school or at a restaurant, you know, in the parking lot. You know, those are usually where people use that, that charging station for a couple of hours. And then if the software alerts that driver, hey, you're, you're charged up, or you need to move, cause there's a limit that can be set. So there's a lot of ways to, I think, obviously, you're not voting on anything right now. I don't believe, but it will be important to all people that, um, certainly know, to, to make sure that you do the right thing. The last thing is parking spaces, charging spaces. So the way it works is they make a dual station or a single station. You buy a dual station, picture it like a parking meter with two cables that come off of it. Those two cables feed four parking spaces for efficiency. So what you're doing is you're moving cables and not cars. Let's say it's at a school. And let's say four, four staff have cars that are electric. Two people are charging. When they're finished, it lets all the drivers know, you know, they're done, you're up. Then people can just move the cables. That's how it works. So you, you want to make sure you don't build a station and don't provide a charging space to park. So there's some things to think about, and have to be participated, to be, to be on management.
So Jeff, the diagrams we've got here, I, I kind of, the location, if we were gonna do it on Jane's Avenue, the location at the parking lot where it's been targeted, that sort of made sense to me. That, cause you don't want to put it way off in the back corner, but you don't want to put it as, you know, the, the two site, the two spaces next to the handicap spaces in the front row either. So that made sense, but the, but it's the back row of the parking lot. Like when you say the two cables will serve four cars, that sounds like it's a double row where you have two cars in one row and then two cars on the other side.
Like facing one another.
In the other row. So you need a double row in order to get to all four cars?
So, so, so there's two ways to do it. One is, no, actually, I saw the location. I see the four spaces in the, in the diagram. I saw the site. And what I'm saying is, those four spaces could be served by one dual, dual charging, right? Cause it's, so two of them. So in other words, it's one post in the ground, you've got two cables that come off of it. And that can be, you know, the first two cars towards the center, and it can be two other cars. Cause the cables are 25 feet long and they have, you know, mechanism that allows them, kind of like, almost like a gas, right?
Right.
I think that location is fine. And I think it's chosen because the infrastructure will come with a hole.
Yep.
Ultimately, if you have, if you had an opportunity, for example, a school parking location, you wouldn't want to put it on island or, or serve, because then you could have eight spaces, you know, it depends on how much, you know, how much infrastructure you want to put in, which is just more costly for more stations, more chargers. And you can just make sure that it's just, all I'm saying is, we have 20, we have 10 stations, two cables. So that's 20, 10 dual chargers. And each, each dual is served, is served four parking spaces. So four people park, and then you can just move the cables. It just makes it more efficient.
So the, so the, the lot, the proposed layout for this one has two dual charging stations, but they're only serving a total of four parking spaces.
So I would call that generous, right? So everybody gets to charge. And then, you know, you're like, it's not, it's not efficient for other drivers, right? So what I'm saying is, two duals can serve eight spaces.
Got it. Okay.
Especially in a work, right? So if it's a school day, you know what I'm saying? You could have four cars parked.
Yep.
Or, you know what I'm saying? Like, that's just generous. Everybody gets a cable. Normally what we see is, is a, the program allows people to, it's called waitlist. It tells you you're charged and then, you know, somebody else has come up, you know, you disconnect the cable and somebody else is plugging. It's just a more efficient way to.
Yep.
Charge vehicles with less infrastructure.
So, uh, okay. So the other question, practice, policy question that occurs to me is, let's for a second, it's, it looks like this diagram shows four parking spaces in the Jane's Avenue lot become the charging, the electric vehicle charging spaces. And my next question was, and do those electric vehicle charging spaces take on the status of handicap spaces except for electric vehicles? Because we've had multiple discussions about the absence of parking downtown, and this is effectively taking four spaces out of circulation for all non-electric vehicles in town, which is the vast majority of vehicles here in town. Unless, unless anybody can park there. And if you just, you know, people maybe know that they won't deliberately park there, if they can park somewhere else, but if there's no other place to park.
The prohibition, I just happened to park at the bank when I came up here. And it basically says, no parking, charging only.
Right. So that's my point is, so the other, aside from the cost issue, which perhaps is nominal, and all, the reason I care about that is because I doubt these are the last charging stations we'll see in Medfield. So when you start down this path, at some point, you wind up having to divert off. So I have a philosophical issue and I have a practical issue there. But on the parking side, we've had several discussions about absence of parking, and now we're taking spots out of circulation except for electric vehicles. And I'm not sure that's really representing.
I will tell you, no, 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 don't, don't be, don't be fooled. November 15th, when I stood. November 15th, when I stood out and watched the school vote, I was like, oh my God, there are so many Teslas in Medfield, it's insane. There were so many that came through, it's deceiving, how many that are out there?
Okay. Well, that's actually good to know, because I feel better about it knowing-
Oh, it's not just three. I mean, I, I, you guys, there were a ton of Teslas. It blew my mind. I was like, whoa.
Those aren't the only electric vehicles either.
Right, because you got the Volt, and you got all the other ones. So I was like, oh my God, we've got more electric vehicles than I would have thought in Medfield.
And if they're coming to vote, then we know they're in Medfield.
Exactly. That's how I knew they were in Medfield, exactly.
So if that, if that population is high, then I'm more inclined to experiment to see what happens here. I'm still, I still would like straight charging, and one of the reasons that that would be good is, that would give us a sense of demand. Handicap spots that are open, I understand why that's important. If I go to, I couldn't, I couldn't fit in the parking lot tonight. I would have been here two minutes earlier if I didn't have to go all the way over. Now we're going to take four more spots out of there. As it is, that parking lot fills up. Maybe I'm less concerned about it if it really is the town employees go there, but again, if you're not supposed to park there and just use it as a parking space, then it all gets a little confused for me.
Well, and I think, again, you know, Jeff can certainly confirm, like, the charge, is it charge point? Is he still, Jeff, you still on?
Charge point.
Yeah, charge. So if there are ways to incent people, you can't park there, even though you've maxed out, you can stay on the, you're just going to hit with a higher nominal fee, you know. It'd be the most expensive parking space in the state of Massachusetts.
Yeah, to Jeff's point about it being a charging station, it's like, okay, how do you enforce that with somebody who pulls in there?
So something, something that's important is, when people are, when people join charge point, in other words, to use the station, most people join, you have to join with a credit card. And, and then people understand that when they go to use a charging station, the first thing that any driver do is press the information button, and it tells you very transparently what is the, what is the cost, if any? How does it work, that kind of thing. So usually people would go, and it would have a message, so you pay. You know, this is, for example, this is free for a dollar, and then you're going to pay X amount for every hour you're out, right? And some, some charge, charging station owners, you know, they want people to charge and move on. But if you stay there, you know, you could get off with, you know, five bucks an hour. And, you know, that incentivizes people to essentially use it as a courtesy, and then move on. You know, in a public space, like, like a parking lot. A school, that's a workplace, there's usually some, you know, mutual respect and understanding among EV drivers. And I will say, you know, Tesla is gut EV thing going, and it is massive, right? Massive. General Motors is not going to make gas-powered cars by 2030. That's their goal, right? So this is here to stay, and the incentive is to kind of get everybody thinking. You can get a Nissan LEAF with incentives for about $22,000, $20,000, you know, which is more reasonable. And the state is definitely looking to find ways to make it happen. It's just, we're incentivized to get us in the electric direction, so that's kind of what it seems to be about. But you can, you have lots of flexibility with how you charge, what's free, when it's free, when it's not.
Jeff, you said the Type 2 chargers are the most popular by far, and I can see in the school parking lots with people that are there, you know, for a school day, that if, if it takes an hour to get 10 or 20 miles on your charge, I can see why if you're somewhere, like during the school day, that you're going to leave it there for a long time. Is there a reason why, when I think of a James Avenue parking lot, I picture people that are moving in and out. The ones that go to dinner at Avenue, okay, they're going to be there for somewhere between an hour and two hours. But the people going to Brothers, maybe they're there for half an hour. Or the people walking into Town Hall to get something done are there for half an hour. It still seems to me like behind the town, you know, the James Avenue parking lot, those rapid chargers, just as a practical matter, would be a more attractive option. Of course, I would have said the same thing with the banks. They would have, you know, it's like, why did you bother? I want to go make a deposit. I'm here for 10 minutes, and I guess I just picked up a bile on my, on my range. Is there any reason why, or maybe Nick, you know why, I mean, it's in the contract. I wouldn't even know if these things were an option, except the contract has it, that if you do the rapid charger, you know, it's a different rule. Is there any reason why we wouldn't want to do that, assuming that we could get grants that cover the cost, whatever that cost happens to be?
If I answer the question, so it could, it takes as little as 15 minutes, 20 minutes, to charge up a Tesla vehicle, you know? And that can be quite a bit of mileage in that amount of time. For other cars with low range, it can be faster. The question is, if somebody plugs in, how long are they going to stay there, right? So the frustration comes around with people thinking, oh, that car's already charged up, because you can see it on the screen, you know, and then people get frustrated. So I don't think it's a bad thing. You certainly, you certainly could have, you know, soup. That's called direct current, you know, high voltage charging. It's not as popular because people tend to, you know, like you said, park a couple of hours, or they're at a workplace. So you're right, it depends on the location. If that were in a Brother's Hard Rock, for example, and somebody's going in for 20 minutes, tops, 30 minutes, then maybe that makes more sense, but I'm not, I'm not sure about park all the way across the street. Maybe it's a geographical problem as well. So the Level 2 is considered pretty fast charge, although it's nowhere near the Level 3. So it just depends on the location.
All right.
You know, workplace, you're right.
Okay.
It's just something to consider, you know.
Yep.
You know, people have to decide to go and make a decision.
Jeff, thank, from my standpoint, thank you very much for the insight.
Thanks, Jeff.
Any other comments?
Nope, I think that was, that was helpful. Very helpful. No?
I think the, I guess, so Nick, you're the, are you the proponent of this being on our agenda?
I would defer that to the Energy Committee, just carrying their water for the evening.
Okay. I guess that maybe I should ask it a different way. What do you think?
I, I mean, this location obviously makes sense. I think we can continue to have a conversation about how it will be set up once, the intention in talking to Susan McPhee was she has started to compile a list of options with the pros and cons, so we should have that in the next couple of weeks for consideration for the next step.
Speaking for myself, just in light of this discussion around two, you know, two parking spaces for a charging versus four, I would basically like to know for sure what we're dealing with. You know, your point about the number, I actually would like to know what the number of electric vehicles here in town is. Because if there's a significant number of electric vehicles where I would actually think that we would see two or four spaces constantly occupied, I would feel a little differently than what I feel when I go almost everywhere that has these charging stations, where most of them are empty. And because, because we're pressed for convenient parking spaces, maybe not total parking spaces, but convenient parking spaces, I would rather not go down a path that takes parking spaces out of circulation, but actually doesn't do anything.
Right. Well, do we have to do this tonight, or can we do a little more homework and find out?
Well, it sounds like we don't have to do it tonight, because it's kind of a discussion, right?
Well, I know Penny's been working on the application to get Eversource for the make-ready. Is there a timeframe on that?
I don't have a good answer on that.
Okay.
We can circle back, I think, in two weeks without too much-
We're seeing a lot of one another over the next couple of weeks.
Yes, we are. Yes.
I mean, the issue of charging, I think, has to get figured out, with what we're going to do on that. We should have an answer for that, rather than just saying, we'll just kind of wean it.
Yeah.
There will be no point in time in the future that people say, you know, you've been giving me a lot of free electricity. I think it's time for me to pay my way. That ain't going to happen. And, and the issue I really have, like, if the schools want to do it free because they see an education value, or they want to make it easy for teachers, or whatever, that's a different issue. But as a town, I, if what Jeff said, and I think he's right, there, if there's not a lot of electric vehicles now, there will be a lot of electric vehicles in the foreseeable future, which means there will be more and more charging stations. And it's, suddenly you'll wind up with more and more charging stations. So the policy that we adopt now for how we deal with that, I think is going to be a policy that it gets more and more awkward to back off of if you don't get this straight right now. I philosophically have a problem with saying, well, we want people to buy electric vehicles, so we're going to charge taxpayers to subsidize the fuel that people with electric vehicles need. If that doesn't, I'm not particularly interested in gouging people, so it's not like, charge them and let's see what we can make money. I'm just saying, if we're not going to buy the fuel for everybody, then there's no good reason for non-electric vehicle-owning taxpayers to subsidize electric vehicle taxpayers. And it shouldn't be a big deal, because it's a minor charge.
Well, I think what Nick is telling us, Gus, is that we don't have to make that decision tonight, that we can decide that decision later, that we can decide we can charge the public for, or we can give it away.
Well, I'm not sure why we wouldn't decide. I'm not sure why, I understand we don't have to decide. I'm saying, what would we know down the road that we can't decide right now? What is, is there any negative to making clear what our policy is on that going into this? Because I can say that there will be a built-in constituency that won't want to do this somewhere down the road at an unspecified time in the future.
So I would say that the agenda item for tonight was to agree to the location services. I would feel uncomfortable with you voting and creating a policy unless we notified everybody that we were going to be discussing that specific policy.
Okay.
So I think the location, I'm okay with the location.
Yeah, okay.
The only, the only, I am okay with the location. The only other location that jumped out at me as a potential one, and it probably isn't near a pole, would be the library parking lot. Not the, not-
We don't own the library parking lot.
I know.
So that's, that's, that's a different discussion for end of summer.
But you can, I can, I can picture how that would be almost a more convenient place centrally located in town that would make sense. But I, but I don't have a problem with doing it here. I don't have a problem with doing it as a, as a, you know, as a pilot, if you will, that just kind of gives us information about how it's used and stuff like that.
So I would recommend that if you're in favor of, and you're okay with the site, of signing and agreeing to do the site host agreement, and then have the Energy Committee come in to talk to you about their thoughts on policy and have that discussion. Okay.
I would like that nailed down, because I'm not confident of where that conversation's going to go.
Okay.
So if we're going to agree to this, the other piece about the site agreement here is I would like clarity. Is it two parking spaces? Is it four? What is the actual?
Sure.
How many site, how many parking spaces?
Yeah, I was just trying to track that down. When we had originally talked about, we had always told them we were applying for three chargers townwide, you know, one for here, and they may have, they may have just added the second, thinking we wanted it. I didn't notice that. I looked at it, saw one part, two parking spots, and just kept going. I didn't notice the answer.
And if Jeff was right, we only would need one of those to be able to serve four spots. But the problem I have is then you're definitely going to need four spots, not two spots.
What's that?
It may depend on the charger you buy.
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, you know, I'm saying, I mean, Jeff was describing a charger that he's familiar with. The cables long enough to reach four different cars.
No, what he was explaining to me tonight before the meeting is that, because I said, like, do they have different adapters? He's like, the charger station twos are generic, and then Tesla has a unique one that you just put an adapter on? So, so he read this, and he saw what they were putting in.
I just, I'm just suggesting that someone may not supply that charger with a 25-foot cable if somebody's only buying it for one location or two cars. That's a possibility.
With the cables, okay, so Nick, this would be a question. Are the, are the cables, the host site responsibility?
We, all that, all that Eversource is doing is building out the infrastructure, so then we would-
So then we have to-
The charge, we buy the charger.
Okay.
They buy the, they put in the infrastructure.
And that's covered under the green community grant.
Okay.
Hey, Christine, the issue, I know I'm being hard-nosed here, but the thing is, I don't really understand why this is a policy decision we can't come to. And I do know that people who want more electric vehicles, their position is going to be, no, make it free. Because that will promote more electric vehicles. And I'm saying, but there's a lot of people in town that are paying tax, you know. The transfer of money is a big issue for me philosophically.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't disagree with that at all.
And I don't understand why that's not a policy decision we can't make upfront.
So why don't we touch base, I know the Energy Committee is meeting Thursday, so maybe, Pete, you can talk to them about this conversation. We can find out from Penny when this site agreement needs to be signed by, and then we can schedule a meeting with them to come before you, depending on that.
But the basic idea of trying to do it, to get those there, to, you know, learn more about it, to begin to, you know, begin to deal with, you know, how do you actually support this as it goes out? It's, as an experimental first shot, I'm on board, and that's not a bad location, and it's, in my view, it's the right spot in the parking lot to put them.
So Gus, are you ready to have a motion on this, or do you want to hold off on this?
Or do you want, do you need a motion to approve the location? I mean, if you want that. I would think the motion would be to sign the contract, and we're not ready for that.
Oh, okay.
It would, actually, just as a point of clarification, if, if Eversource is willing to build out, if Eversource is willing to build it out for two charge ports, total four spots, is the board okay with that, or do you want to limit to two parking spots for now? And we'll tell them just to revise their plan.
We would want them to build it out as much as they can, and then we'll use whatever we have to use.
I disagree. I, I'd like to think about that.
Okay.
In fairness, I'd like to think about it. The reservation I have is the, you just take four more spot, you're taking four spots out of the parking lot.
No, because you're, you're just going to use two, and then you're going to make a decision about the other two later.
No, because you're, if you bought one station, if I heard Jeff correctly, if we do one box, four cars feed off of that.
Right. Or they can.
Yes. So, so-
So we're going to buy, we're going to buy one charging unit.
That-
That'll go with two spaces, but we'll have the infrastructure going to another spot that can do another two spaces, but we're not going to buy a box for that one.
If I heard Jeff correctly, and again, I can, I'll be chatting with him tomorrow, that one box, even though you think it's just two coming out, it's actually four coming out, because you can, you can have two cables going left and right.
No, that's not what he said. What he said was you have, like, you get a gas pump, think about a gas pump.
Yeah.
A car pulls up on either side.
I think we can clarify all of this if we come back in a couple of weeks with designs and everything.
Just quickly, so you could pull up the one gas pump with one hose.
Yeah.
15-foot or 20-foot hose, and it could serve a car on either side. And I think that's what he was saying. So what would happen is you'd have to, you'd have the one station with two cables coming out of it that are 15, 20 feet long. A car pulls up and charges right in front of it. That charge finishes it, you pull the cord out of that one and plug it into the-
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. Yes.
It's more like the recycling bins at the transfer station. There's one, there's one door on each side, but there's two parking spaces, and you just have to carry the stuff in and throw that same door.
Right.
That's, that's, I, now I hear what you're saying. That's what you said.
You can't both be throwing it at the same time.
He was right.
All right. I think that was progress, perhaps not as much as envisioned, but that was progress. Good. Vote to approve agreements with Solar Energy Development for the Town Garage Power Purchase Agreement, Lease Agreement, and Pilot Agreement.
Totally. We are going to hold that for now.
I was going to say, I didn't see that.
Nope, we're not ready for that this evening. Not that I don't want to keep talking about this.
Okay. Let's see, citizen comment?
I have nobody signed up for citizen comment.
Nobody signed up for that. Consent agenda. We have Medfield Garden Club requesting placing signs in the usual locations in the week prior to the annual plant sale on Saturday, May 14th.
Excellent.
Memo's 2022 Summer Concert Series on Thursdays at 6:00 p.m. from June 16th to August 18th at the gazebo in the park outside the library. Requesting authorization to hang a banner announcing the concert series across Main Street, Baxter Park around June 4th through the last concert. Memo's 2022 Discover Medfield Day for the 42nd year, Saturday, September 4th from 9:00 to 3:00. Requesting use of town-owned land at Meeting House Pond area and portions of North and Frere Streets and Uppam Road. Also a common vidler license, also hanging a banner announcing the Discover Medfield Day across Main Street at Baxter Park around August 20th through Discover Medfield Day. And I would point out that in the letter that Russ Halasy sent us, he requested, he pointed out that in the past, the board has graciously- pointed out that in the past, the board has graciously waived the $50 application fee for the common vidler's license. Uh, and he doesn't explicitly ask us to do it again. He says, however, if the fee is required, please let me know and I'll forward payment to you. But I'm guessing he's still hoping that we will be gracious this year as we have been in the past. Um, he's also indicated that they are requesting written permission of all the other private property owners that we would normally do for Medfield Day. And they're going to get a certificate of insurance, and for some reason, I thought there was, maybe that was it, I was thinking there was one more thing in that letter. Let me just take, I guess that was it. So I think the, so that's the consent, and I think there's one more.
There's, there's one more, and just for clarification, this was the one from the First Parish Church.
Yep.
They have clarified that, I had a conversation with them, they are not anticipating using Main Street, they made a mistake when they filled, uh, filled out the email.
Okay.
It is North Street, and they're only intending the sidewalks.
Yeah, there's no problem.
So, yeah.
There's no problem, okay. So with the understanding that the Medfield Day, unless you two tell me not, I'm going to suggest the Medfield Day request includes us waiving the $50 common vidler's fee.
Yeah, it's a new selectman, I don't want to go rocking the boat on that.
There you go, well.
I, I would guide you, do not.
Well, down to you, Pete.
That's fine.
Okay. Then I'll entertain a motion.
And are we including the 15 and 16 in this, Gus?
Fifty, uh, fifty.
Medfield food covered?
Oh, shoot, wait a minute, hold on, there's 16, I'm still working up.
It says Medfield community covered.
Yeah, thank you, Pete. Yeah, so, so the, we're including 15. First Parish UU Church of Medfield requests a parade permit for May 25th at 7:30 p.m. for anti-racist candlelight vigil to take place around Meeting House Pond, Frery Street, and North Street sidewalks. Uh, and then the last one is Medfield Community Covered requests approval to post signs in the usual locations for the postal drive being held on May 14th, 2022. Signs would be posted on May 9th and removed on May 15th.
Well, I would move the consent agenda with the understanding that I think it's the Medfield food covered, not the community covered that's asking for it.
Right, there's food covered, right? Yeah, great, good catch. Have a second?
Jeff needs the second.
All right, they're waiting for your second on the consent agenda.
Second. I was reading, I was reading your comments, it just popped up, that's why I wanted to.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries, good. What comment? Uh, oh, does Jeff want to clarify something?
He needs to clarify something.
Okay, I think we're switching back over to the, the electric vehicle charger for a minute. Go ahead, Jeff, if you're there, if you can get him there.
He's left the meeting. He's not in the meeting at all anymore.
Wait, Joe, okay.
Man.
We, I can follow.
He won't even give us five minutes. He's not going to bring me up when I ask to be brought up, and the heck with you. Okay. Uh, next item is meeting minutes. I am only prepared to approve two, March 15th and March 22nd, 2022.
I'm only ready to do one, the one I was involved in, so I'm good with the fifth.
The fifth.
Oh, of April.
The fifth of April.
I'm not ready for that one. How about you, Pete?
I'm all set on all 15, I made edits to all of them.
You dog. Okay.
It took a long time, it did.
All right, so the only two that we, so, um, the only two that I'm prepared to vote approval on, that you don't have to because you weren't here.
Right.
Is May 15th and May 22nd. I had March 1st as that one that I sent back, and if that's been redone, that was the one that was the mess.
Yeah, it hasn't been finished yet.
So that one's still a red for sure.
Gus, I think you just said May 15th, and did you mean March 15th?
March 15th, March 22nd, 2022.
So moved.
Second, or you can say, I guess, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so those, those two at least went away. I was counting on Pete to be like still behind me in the race, but, all right. I've been doing a lot of reading this week, it's just not minutes. Uh, town administrator update.
Uh, just a reminder that town meeting is Monday at 7:00 at the high school, and if you can bring your warrant report with you, we would appreciate it.
Is there a selectman's meeting posted before that?
We, we'll need to.
Yeah, but we will.
We'll need to.
There'll be a meeting, yeah.
That just kind of came up today.
We usually typically post one just in case there's any last minute things.
Uh, next meeting date's the town meeting, as Christine just covered it, our next meeting date is May 10th. So we're meeting on the second Tuesday because of the town meeting. May 18th is the Medfield State Hospital Information System with Trinity Financial, so that's, they're coming in on that one. May 24th is our second Board of Selectmen's meeting next week, next month. Uh, selectmen reports.
All right, so I had a chance to meet with Bill Friday afternoon. We, he gave me thorough background on everything that's gone on in the, the area where they're doing the dig out right now, the Charles River dig out. So I very much appreciate it.[1614.41]